All right. Good evening, everyone. This is Shannon Rutherford. I'm a town planner for Farmington, and we've got the start of our Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. I am going to take roll call of our commission members and then turn it over to our chair. So first member, I'm going to note for the record, Patrick Carrier is not in attendance this evening and will not be participating. Next up, Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Hut Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Yeah.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
James Radcliffe.
Here.
Matthew Bandle. Matthew Bandle. As noted as absent for now. All right, Madam Chair.
Good evening, everyone. This is Inez St. James, the Chair of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Welcome to our meeting today, Monday, March 13. We appreciate everyone attending. Thank you to our volunteer commissioners. And I'm glad you're here. We have a full agenda. Before we start with the new business items, we do need to assign a replacement for Patrick. Did Matthew call in by any chance or no? Matthew Bandle?
Yes.
No, okay. Mike Walsh, you are next in the rotation. Are you comfortable being a voting member this evening?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so for the record, Mike Walsh will be a voting member. We have a lot of items, new business. We do have some public hearing items also. Our meetings tend to be long and we are possibly looking at some inclement weather. We're going to run as fast as we can that makes sense and give everyone opportunities to speak and ask questions. But we are hoping to end as around 11 o'clock wherever it makes sense for disclosure. And I think that's it. So Scott, if you can read the legal notice, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, March 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Anco Development LLC application for special permit to construct house in excess of 2,200 square feet located at Lot 8572 Oakland Avenue, adjacent to 27 Oakland Avenue, R9OG Zone. Carrier Group, Inc., application for special permit for 25 lot cluster subdivision for property located at 8517 and 8518 Maria Road, adjacent to 18 Maria Road, R40 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on your screen as well, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 23rd day of February 2023, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Inez St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott. Well done. And for folks that have called in, if you can mute yourself, please, we would appreciate it. So again, we can go as fast as we can. And we'll remind commissioners, but our next meeting, we're going to hybrid. So for commissioners, you will all be coming in person. So Shannon will remind us, I'll remind you, by March 27th, our next meeting commissioners are in house. All right, new business. The first item we have is an application from Christopher Hutwelker. It's a signed application for property located at 1795 Farmington Avenue in Unionville. And who do we have, Shannon?
I believe we have Christopher on the phone.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, if you can explain your application and we will then turn it to the commission for questions if they have them.
Absolutely. So our application is at 1795 Farmington Ave. It's an existing Shell gas station. Shell has required this site to be upgraded to their latest image. So the site currently has four dispensers, and this is what the new dispensers will look like. We're basically changing out the balances, which goes on top of the pump, and then changing out the pump doors. There's no increase in square footage or anything. So basically just what the latest and greatest from Shell. And then for the sign, we are also revising the main ID sign. So we went back and forth quite a bit with the town to make sure that this sign meet the previous approval from 2009. So we're not replacing any of the cabinets. The overall height has remained the same. We're simply just retrofitting it. So we're retrofitting it with a white background that's opaque. Only the Shell Pectin, which is the logo, will be illuminated. There will be no illumination on the food mark sign. And then there will be illumination on the price sign where it says regular cash, where I go with credit, and where the prices are. So we worked back to make sure that it didn't meet the same level of illumination that it previously had. And then we're going to paint the pole, and that's really it. So I welcome your questions.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, let's do this. Mike, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Just one, the piece that's illuminated, that's internally illuminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No questions, thank you.
How about you, Liz?
No questions, thanks.
Sure. James?
No questions.
And Mike Walsh?
No questions.
All right, and did Matthew Bandle call in by any chance? No, okay. The only question I have, and it's not specific to what you're requesting, but I noticed, maybe it's for Shannon, on the application or the request, all the items, you know, where we have a required item list, nothing was checked up. Do we have everything we need? It just stood out to me.
We did, since it's a some of it doesn't apply because they're not new sign in a new location. It's a refacing of existing signs.
Replace, yeah, replacement.
So it's a refacing of those existing. So and since that, and we with the graphics provided, able to confirm areas hadn't changed and the illumination hadn't changed.
Okay, thank you. It just stood out for me.
Understood.
Okay, so commissioners, we went through the questions. Christopher, do you have anything else you want to add, or it seemed pretty straightforward?
Yeah, I think it's very straightforward, so no further questions or anything.
All right, so we need a motion and a second, commissioners, please.
Well, I guess I've been nominated by some of my fellow commission members to take over Patrick's role. So this is Liz Sanford. I make a motion that we accept the sign application from Christopher Hutwelker.
Approve.
Excuse, thank you, to approve the sign application by Christopher Hutwelker of 1795 Farmington Avenue.
As presented.
My second.
I'm sorry, as presented.
You're good.
Scott Halsted, I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're good. So this has been approved, and Christopher, you'll be hearing from Shannon?
Oh, yeah, we'll be following up. Staff will follow up with you in a few days, okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Moving right along, the next one is also a sign application from Sign Pro for property located at 220 Farmington Avenue in Farmington.
Correct. I believe we've got Christine on the phone. She wasn't on the phone. Christine, her 220 Farmington Avenue.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay.
So if you can just present for the commission exactly what you're looking to do. I know this is the location on the building, and then I've got your graphic.
Yes, thank you. I am here to propose a halo lit wall sign at 220 Farmington Avenue. The sign would be installed on the front renovation, northeast facing elevation, excuse me. The sign will be made of aluminum cabinet with acrylic push-throughs that will be covered in blackout vinyl on the face of the logo. So the illumination, the halo illumination, will only shine through around the outside perimeter of the logo itself. There will be no lights village through the faces themselves or throughout the sides of the cabinet itself. I apologize. It is also 54 square feet. I forgot to mention that. And again, it is halo lit, so the, I know you can't tell in that picture, but yes, the night photo, you can kind of tell. It's a very thin line of illumination around the outside of the logo itself only. And that is basically it. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. All right, Mike?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Scott?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Scott. I mean, Matt?
Just for me, is there just one sign as shown here in the picture on this side of the building?
Yes, it's just the one sign. It's just giving you a view during the daylight and at night, so you can see the illumination.
Got it. Great. Thank you. No additional questions.
Thank you. Liz?
No questions, thanks.
All right, James?
No questions for me.
And Mike Walsh?
No questions.
All right. And just out of curiosity, and I know you're with Sign Pro, so maybe you don't know that, but is this a new business?
It is a newer business. I am not positive how long they have been here or if they are even open at this point.
Hi, my name is Debbie Roland, and I'm representing Civic Infusion, and we are open. We are a new business in Farmington. We are a biologic infusion center, which means we give infusions to people who have chronic conditions like Crohn's and Colitis, or MS, or Lupus, rheumatoid arthritis. And we have an office in Wilton, Connecticut. That's where our flagship is. And then we open, we have an office in Valhalla, New York. We have an office in North Haven, and Farmington is our fourth office. And we're so excited to be part of the community, serving the Hartford area.
Fantastic. Thank you. My other question was, what do you do? And you definitely serve an important role, and welcome to Farmington.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. We're so excited.
Absolutely. All right, so based on the questions, it sounds like we're ready to vote on this item, on this sign application. I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll try again, get better this time. I make a, this is Liz Sanford. I make a excuse me, make a motion to accept the sign application from Sign Pro at 220 Farmington Avenue as presented.
Did I hear accept? No.
Approved, right, Liz?
Yes, I said approved, didn't I?
I may have misheard, so that's okay. But as long as we're clear on the wording, that's fine. Thank you.
And second?
Second, yeah.
Second, Mike Walsh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are good. So sign application is approved. Thanks again and welcome.
Thank you, Christine and Debbie.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, the next one, next new business item, excuse me, is an application.
Inez?
Yes.
Can I just, this is Liz. The way Shannon is sharing her screen, we have the split screen of your, the documents and the participants. Is it possible to get the documents part bigger so I can see a little better?
Did any of that help?
Yes, a little bit, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. The next item is an application from Calco Construction. It's a request for a 90-day extension on an application that we approved in the past for a cluster subdivision at 168 Coppermine Road. So Shannon, you mentioned that we can do this twice?
Correct. There's up to, and I thought John Sinise had said he was going to call.
Oh, he's on, okay.
Okay, hang on. Thank you, Barrett.
Okay.
John, are you there? John, you've got to unmute your microphone.
Or not, okay.
So that's fine.
This application, it has obviously a lot of history, right? And it was approved, and so what is, is it just technicality or?
So it was, as noted in the agenda review, so it was a cluster subdivision at 168 Coppermine Road, and it was approved by TPZ back in October of 2022. And by statute, they're allowed 90 days to file the subdivision, but that also includes then addressing all the engineering comments and preparing all of the easement documents, which in this case, there's some substantial easement documents. And so they've requested an extension to complete this documentation, because of course, all of this needs to be reviewed by staff prior to any of this being filed on the land records. So they, by statute, they're allowed up to two 90-day extensions. This would be the first of those extensions that they've requested.
Okay. I mean, it's
It's fairly
Right.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Sinise is not unmuted his microphone, so I
Okay, so commissioners, unless you have any questions, we need a motion and a second to approve the first 90-day extension?
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Thanks, Liz.
Okay, Liz Sanford here. I'd like to approve Calco Construction's request for a 90-day extension of time to file subdivision mylar and associated documents for 168 Coppermine Road.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Mike Walsh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we are all set. I wish we could talk to John. I'm wondering how work at Tamberg is going. I still see like the piles and when you enter and
Correct. We monitor that. We chat with him every so often regarding that. It's been quiet through the winter, so there'll be perhaps a little more movement in the spring.
They're working. There's three lots left. One lot, they're pretty much done with the exterior, and there's two vacant lots left over.
Okay, it's, you know, it is on a main, right, through way through our town, and just having a sign, just a nice way to enter. Yeah, that's my personal opinion, but thank you for the All right, moving right along. Let's see here. The next few items are applications we are accepting this evening. The first one is an application from Krenar Metaxa at 8 Spring Lane. It's an application for special permit for personal service shop hair salon in the CR zone and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 10. I need a motion and a second, please.
Liz Sanford, I move that we accept the application from Krenar Metoxa 8 Spring Lane for a special permit for personal service shop hair salon in the CR zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 10, 2023.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Mike Walsh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, application is accepted. Next one is an application from Paul Melzen at 24 Gale Road. It's an application for special permit for expansion of home in R20 Zone and a public hearing date, recommended date of April 10. We need a motion and a second.
Liz Sanford, I make a motion to accept the application from Paul Melzen of 24 Gale Road for a special permit for expansion of home in the R20 Zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 10, 2023.
Second?
Mike Walsh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, thank you, Liz and Mike. And the last new business item in front of us is an application from Calco Construction, Inc. Regarding a property at 222 Talkit Notch Road in Farmington. It's an application for six-lot subdivision in the R80 Zone with a public hearing recommended date of April 24. Motion and second, please.
Okay, Liz Sanford, I make a motion to accept the application for a six-lot subdivision by Calco Construction, Inc. For 222 Talkit Notch Road, excuse me, for a six-lot subdivision in the R80 Zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of April 24, 2023.
Mike Walsh, second.
Excellent, thank you. All in favor?
And that's kind of a quick question.
Go for it.
Is this one of the subdivisions on the grandfathered in list, and does it factor into our moratorium?
Correct, because Mr. Sinise has already completed the wetlands application and wetlands permitting for this location. So any property that had completed wetlands would be allowed to continue, correct?
Well, that makes sense. We're just double checking. Thank you. I'm good.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Good job. Thank you, Matt. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, commissioners. So we're done with the new business items. We're going to move to the public hearing portion. I'm sure a lot of folks that are on the line are here for those meetings. We're not going to put limits on people that have called in and have an opinion on any of these applications. But please, if you can, you know, stick to comments regarding this application, we would greatly appreciate it. We are going to try to adjourn this evening as close to 11:00 as possible. We're all volunteers here. We're all elected officials representing you. So thanks for calling in. That's why we have these meetings. The way this works, so Shannon is going to run this portion like she always does. The presenter or the applicant will present the application. Commissioners will have a chance to go through questions and comments, and then we will open the floor to you. And whoever's going to speak, if you could identify yourself, give us your name and address for the record, it will be very helpful. All right, so the first application is an item we've continued from prior meeting. It's an application from Harold and Wilson for special permit for clear cutting and restoration and ridgeline protection area for property located at 61 Eli Road, R80 Zone. And again, this was an item that we are continuing from the February 27th meeting. So what's the latest?
Correct. So we did, as discussed at the end of that meeting on February 27th, we received written correspondence from Mr. Wilson granting the extension to the March 27th meeting as he is unavailable this evening. So that's what's up on the screen. So we do need a motion and a second to continue this to March 27th, please.
Okay. Commissioners, please.
Okay, let me, I hope I get this one right. Liz Sanford here. I make a motion to am I saying extend?
To just continue, continue.
To continue the public hearing for Harold Wilson, 161, excuse me, 61 Eli Road in his application for special permit for clear cutting and restoration of ridgeline protection area in an R80 Zone.
To
And we're going to continue to March 27?
Continue to March, do you mean, do you mean April? Oh, March. What am I, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
That's okay.
Continue until the March 27, 2023 meeting.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Mike Walsh, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the item is being continued. All right, the next one is an item that also is being continued. It's an application from BB Development LLC. It's an application for special permit and site plan approval for a gas station with convenience store located at 368 Plainville Avenue, B1 Zone. All right, and who do we have?
We have multiple people on. Jim, are you taking the lead with this? Jim Ziogas?
I think he was on before.
Yes, Jim, you've got to unmute your microphone, please.
Is that good, Shannon?
There we go.
Thank you. Sorry about that. James Ziogas, 104 Bellevue Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for the applicant. At the last meeting, we had an extensive presentation regarding our application. And through the discussions of the commissioners and discussion of people in attendance, it was apparent to us that there were a couple of issues that we needed to look at and see if we could address the comments of the commission. So what we did was we went back to the original plan, and we made some revisions to it in hopes of satisfying the comments or the questions that the commission had. First, I thought, and most importantly, was the landscape buffer to the west of our proposed building. The requirements in the zone indicate that there's a 25-foot landscape buffer that's required. We had a 25-foot landscape buffer shown on the plan, but it was not in compliance with the regulations in terms of the number of plants, the berms, and things of that nature. At the time that we had submitted our plans, originally, we did not have a landscape architect onboard. Since that time, we did retain a landscape architect. He's available tonight to discuss this with you. The long and the short of it being is that we've taken that building, which was 45 feet in width, and we've reduced the size of the building by five feet. So that landscape buffer area to the west of our building is now 30 feet instead of 25 feet. So we've given ourselves a little bit more room. And we hope that was responsive to the commission's questions. In addition to that, there were questions regarding the size of the building and the overall height of the building. Charlie Nyber, who's here tonight, went back to the drawing board and revised the plans for this building. We've reduced the building height, and we've also reduced the square footage of the building, and he will address that concern. The third issue that was talked about at the meeting was the bypass lane on Plainville Avenue going in a northerly direction, I believe, towards Unionville. The original plan did not have a bypass lane in it. We all recognize that the function of DOT would really control whether or not a bypass lane is going to be required. However, we thought, in the exercise of good judgment, that we would show the bypass lane on our plan indicating to the commission and to the state that we believe that it's a proper request and in hopes that the DOT would accept it and approve it. Scott Hesketh, our traffic engineer, is also online tonight to go over that change with you. So having said that, our landscape architect Kurt should be online. Kurt, if you would introduce yourself, maybe tell the commission a little bit about your resume, and then explain the landscaping plan to them.
So Kurt Hollis of One Saw Mill Lane in Plansville, Connecticut. I have my master's degree from the University of Michigan in landscape architecture. And we've been designing and installing for over 30 years. So the client called me Jay and said that the town had asked him to take on a landscape architect to review the property and to address some of the concerns that the committee had. So I met with Bruce and Shannon at their office and went over the regulations and stuff, and some of the concerns that may come up or did come up on the landscape. We then went back out and staked the property and surveyed the property to determine viable species or viable trees that could be left by some of the Um, viable species or viable trees that could be left, um, by, by some of the rearranging that was discussed earlier. Um, and then implementing proper specie layout to give, um. A, a great shade and blocking, uh, of the building and of the property. Um, so we reviewed a, a, and I tagged species. And what we did was we kept a large quantity of deciduous, um, species. Along the rear of the property while mixing in. Four different varieties of evergreens, so that the property to the rear would be blocked, um. And what we, what we did was mix very shade dense, uh, tolerant plants to less shade tolerant, depending on. How many deciduous trees and shrubs could be left in the back. And then again, on the side of the property where the detention pond sits. Um, there's some substantial small white pines and, and. And in excess of sixty large deciduous trees that we, um, changed the design not to cut into. And to line the detention pond with evergreens to give a, um. A, a screening to the side of the property. So with discussions with Bruce and Shannon, I, I feel we came up with a plan that would. The, at the highest, again, not everything fits perfectly, but. Uh, fits the site to the best that, that could be by saving existing species and intertwining evergreens to make it, uh, the best fit possible.
And, uh, Kurt, if you would just talk about the berm for a second as well to explain to the commission what we did with the berm?
Okay, so the berm, the berm will be anywhere from. Zero to five feet tall, zero where there's existing, um. Deciduous trees that we don't want to lose for the canopy, um, as well as for their sizes. And then wherever we can put up to a five foot tall berm, we're gonna address a five foot. We can only cover root systems of so much, otherwise we'll, we'll end up killing off, uh, the existing foliage there. So in any, any and all areas that we can maximize to a five foot berm will be, will be a five foot berm. Um, and then it will scale down to the, to the footprint of the, of the existing trees. Uh, scaled down to nothing, but this way will allow these large species on the property line to be left. Uh, while, while trying to. Hit the regulation of a berm. So if, it's, if you can imagine, it goes up and down, up and down, it'll, it'll, it'll. Meander through the existing foliage and then we'll, we'll, we'll spot the different evergreens along that berm path.
Uh, Kurt, in your opinion, the neighbor to our west, which is behind the building. When the building is completed and the landscaping is done, uh, what, what is their visibility going to be of the building?
So the, the first six to, the six to, uh, would be six plus as much as five, so as much as eleven feet would be totally. Totally covered, and then the canopy, when it's leafed out, will, 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 will cover a bunch of it. And then, um, there are pictures that were presented that a lot of these species within five years. You'll probably won't see the building from the backside ever again. Um, obviously, you can only plant species so large and so, so wide. Um, but the design was planned, so a five-year plan that would totally block this within five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Uh, how about, can we go through?
Yeah, why don't we do your full presentation and then we'll ask questions if that's okay?
That's perfect, perfect. Uh, secondly, we have Charlie Nyberg here. Charles, would you please discuss with them the revisions that we made to the structure and its design? Charlie, you have to unmute yourself as well.
Hello?
Yes, Charles, go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes.
Good, uh. So, uh, good evening, folks. Uh, Charlie Nyberg, uh, Shadler Sell Now, five Waterville Road in Farmington. Uh. Based on your last meeting and working with my client, our client, uh, Jay. Uh, and also with Jim, we, we elected to reduce the width of the building, as Attorney Ziogas has mentioned, from forty-five to forty feet. Which allowed the greater amount of space at the rear of the building. To allow for the, uh, planting to occur, as well as the berm and to give a little bit more breathing room to the rear of the site. We also listened to some of the folks, uh, well, listened to the folks across the street. Expressing their, uh, sort of displeasure at the look of the building and the height. And, uh, what we did there was to, uh, generally keep the same theme. Of the two gable ends, but those have been reduced in height. Uh, down to twenty foot eight, whereas before, now it's not a lot of reduction. But that's a small part of the mass of the building. So they were reduced from twenty-one at the ridge to twenty foot eight. However, we also reduced the central mass of the building from what was twenty-seven feet. And that twenty-seven feet was sixty-five feet of the length of the building. So that dimension is now down to, I believe, it's something in the order of, uh, twenty, twenty feet, I believe. And the pop-up in the middle is at twenty-one foot eight. So the, the basic huge look of the building with the gable end at the entrance has been drastically reduced. One of the ways we were able to achieve that change was to reorient the storage space. Instead of running north to south, it is now running east to west. And on your plan, uh, you can see the stair is in a different configuration than what we had with the first floor plan. Uh, that, uh, has again, some windows at the front and rear of the building, the signage band. Which was shown on the last or the first presentation is still the same size and occurs in that particular location. There are three, uh, awnings. One over each of the windows and the gable and one over the entry door. Uh, they shan't be awnings as much as they're, uh, an aluminum structure. Uh, the, uh, let's see, uh. The other change in this was relocating the mechanical equipment. Instead of a mechanical equipment platform running along the entire west side of the building. Again, north to south. We have made two mechanical equipment platforms, one on the north side. If you look at your RA, your RA two drawing, which is the, uh, uh, what I'm calling the roof plan. Uh, which shows the storage again, running east to west. With the mechanical equipment platform to the north and an equipment, a mechanical. Equipment platform running on the south side. We have annotated in there as best we could at this time. Not having fully engineered MEP drawings. Basically, two five-ton units, one on the north, one in the south. We've also illustrated a, uh, makeup air, uh, unit for the. Uh, cooking and the exhaust fan for the cooking, which would be located on the. South side of that, uh, storage area. And reflects what's happening in the floor plan with the cooking area. Again, to be determined as to how much we have. Uh, as far as, you know, a four burner range, a six burner range, or whatever, maybe a fryer, we don't know that yet. But again, that will all be part of our planning. The screening on the back for the mechanical equipment platforms will be now solid instead of, uh. Uh, vertically open view through, minimally viewed through. Uh, that'll be a solid panel, and basically that height of that from the roof would be about five feet. A mechanical equipment unit of five tons is about forty inches high with a curb of, let's say, a foot and a half. Which would put that just at the top edge of that, uh, screening. But again, it's looked at at a distance, you're looking up. Uh, if, even if the mechanical equipment was sticking up a foot. You would not at a distance see that depending, uh, as to its height, as to, again, where we're showing the, the two units. Uh, I haven't shown a lot of detail on these revised plans. Because the same, uh, finishes, uh, clapboard, trim, uh, whatever, brick base. Would all remain the same. So again, I elected not to do that. Trusting that, uh, you could translate the, uh, existing first presentation to these elevations. The one thing that I am now thinking about, and I've talked with our client, is in lieu of the colors that we were suggesting. I am now thinking of this as a white structure, uh, with maybe a gray brick at the bottom. Black trim and the awning pieces done in black, uh, which would keep it more in keeping. Probably with the neighborhood, more of a colonial kind of New England look with the white finishes and what have you. So at this point, I would conclude my presentation. If you have questions. Obviously, we'll answer yours as well as any of the, uh, public who have comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Commissioners, the, uh, the size of the building has been reduced from approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet to three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. In looking at the building and its relationship to the parcel. Uh. In total, uh, the building represents about five percent coverage of the, uh, sixty-six thousand six hundred square feet parcel of land. So it's, it's not a, it's not a large building per se, especially for, uh, in given the size of a parcel. The, uh, the third issue that, uh, we had talked about last meeting was the, uh, was the traffic. Uh, situation and, and the potential for a bypass lane. Uh, Scott Hesketh is online. He's our traffic engineer. And, uh, Scott, I would ask you to review that with the commissioners.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, good evening. For the record, Scott Hesketh. Licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. Um, firm of FA Hesketh and Associates. Our office is in East Granby, Connecticut. And we are the author of the traffic report, which has been submitted in support of the application. Um. Town staff had, uh, suggested that a bypass capability be provided on Plainville Avenue, Route one seventy-seven. At the proposed, uh, site driveway. In our report, we had indicated there's, uh, between, uh, at the. The northbound lanes of Plainville Avenue are eighteen feet width. Uh, narrowing to about sixteen feet width, uh, at about the point of the, of the site driveway. Indicating that if a vehicle had hugged the double yellow center line, uh, there was, it was possible for someone to. Scoot around them on the right-hand side and bypass. Um, town staff indicated that they would like to see a formal bypass capability. So we have agreed to provide that onto the plans. We're proposing to widen the northbound lanes of Route one seventy-seven. To a width of twenty feet from the existing double yellow center line. And that will be, uh, that will provide a bypass capability for northbound traffic. Could someone be waiting to execute a left-hand turn into the site driveway? The twenty-foot width is the standard bypass width required by the Department of Transportation. And, um. This widening will be included on plans submitted to the DOT for their review, and if, uh, so approved by them. We would be happy to, uh. Implement that widening at the, at this location. Uh, town staff had also talked about the, a widening of Burlington Road. Uh, to provide a bypass capability at the traffic signal at that location. Um, we were asked to take a look at that. Um, based on our review of the situation, one, there's not a lot of, uh, right-of-way in that area. A bypass capability on Burlington Road will require about thirty-five feet of pavement. Which would be a, a widening of about seven to eight feet on that roadway. It would require the relocation of several existing utility poles. And with the relocation of the utility poles would also require, uh, replacement of the traffic signal at that, uh, at that location. Uh, so based on these factors and, and the fact that our facility does not have a impact. On the operations of that intersection. Uh, the level of service calculations indicate that. The intersection operates at the same levels of service in both the background and combined conditions. And that the Burlington Road approach itself operates at the same levels of service under the background and combined conditions. And that the, um. Calculated ninety-fifth percentile Q. Uh, on the Burlington Road approach to the traffic signal increases by less than one vehicle during peak hours, uh, as a result of this development. So, um, we, we believe that it's, um, impractical to widen Burlington Road to provide bypass capability. Uh, therefore, we are, we are not proposing it at this time. Uh, I believe that, uh, addresses the traffic concerns that the commission had. Um, I will be here to answer any questions that the commissioner, the public has at the appropriate time. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Attorney Ziogas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, commissioners, with respect to the overall site development plan. The, uh, town staff had proposed or asked certain questions regarding their site plan review. Uh, those questions were submitted to us in writing. We have, we have replied to those questions in writing as well. Sev Bavino, who is the, uh, civil engineer, land surveyor, and site planner for Kratzert and Jones. Uh, is, uh, available online now. Uh, just basically to recap, uh, those, uh, those questions and the responses that he provided. Sev? Sev, can you hear us?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sev Bavino, planner with Kratzert Jones and Associates, representing the applicant. Uh, since the last meeting, we have revised the plans to reflect, uh, the landscaping. Um. Suggested by Kurt Hollist, a landscape architect. Uh, we revised the plans to show the bypass lane on, um. One seventy-seven northbound to allow for a bypass lane there for about three hundred and sixty feet in length. Um, we have, uh, edited all the, um. Responses to comments together and submitted to staff. And that, uh, those are the only changes that we have made since the last meeting. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Sev. Uh, commissioners, that's the, uh, the extent of our revised presentation at this point. So if there's any questions, uh, we'd open it up for that purpose.
Thank you very much, everyone, for the updates. And the changes to the site plan. Alright, um, we are gonna go through the commissioners first. Uh, Mike, uh, do you have any questions, comments?
I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, just a couple. So, um. The bypass lane first. So I think you mentioned two feet. Is how much the road we, needs to be widened. Just curious, where does the two feet come from? Is it? A little bit from each side of the road? Is it taking piece of this property?
Scott? Scott Hesketh? Yep. Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, the, uh, it'd be between a two to a five-foot widening, depending on what location we're at. Uh, all of the widening would be done on the east side of the roadway. And the. It, it, it makes sense just to widen to a twenty-foot half-section from the radius return, uh, there Burlington Road. All the way up to the, um. There is a, a drainage structure just north of the site. Uh, at the very north end of the plan, where the, the curbing kicks out slightly. And rather than taper into a twenty-foot section and then taper back. Um, we decided just to go with a twenty-foot half-section, the entire length. Um, so it's, it's between a two to a, a four or five-foot widening, depending on what location of the roadway you're on.
And Scott, that widening is all within the right-of-way?
That widening is all within the right-of-way, and the existing utility poles in that location are, are set back, um. Another five or six feet, so the widening would not result in the need to relocate any of the, uh, existing utilities. We would need to regrade some of the, uh, driveway aprons to the residential, uh, houses in that location. But that's, that's standard procedure.
Okay, thank you for your clarification on that. Then one quick question on the, on the landscape buffer. So you mentioned it would take about five years for that to fully grow, and I certainly understand that, and. You can only put, uh, trees in that are so large. Let's say at construction, how much of that building is going to be showing to the?
Let's say at construction, how much of that building is going to be showing to the neighbor?
At construction at or a completion of construction?
Completion of construction, excuse me.
Oh, so currently um currently there is a uh green giant hedge that the neighbor had uh installed. Um so if you're standing in their yard and you're six feet tall, uh you won't really see the building at all because their hedge is six feet tall. But obviously, because of the guidelines, we're gonna be installing um a secondary to supplement what's already over there. So it depends where you're standing in 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 their yard. If you're in their backyard, due to the fact that large deciduous species, some of their green giants didn't grow, and you'll see a little bit more. But we beefed up that would be to the if you're looking at the building to the right side, we beefed up the amount of plants in that zone so that you wouldn't see much of the building. You it's good. You're gonna see some holes here and there. Um but again, it would a five foot berm, six foot to nine foot trees. Because in your packet or maybe online, um Jay had produced some of the plants that were at a nursery yard that were already saved for this job if it goes forward. And some of the plants are nine feet tall. So you're you're gonna cover a lot of this building right away. Um because the areas that their plants aren't, we're beefed up and and will have a five foot berm. So you'll have almost twelve feet of concentration.
Okay, appreciated. Thank you for the clarification. No more questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Matt?
Uh, does this berm have any difference if it's the winter versus the summer?
No. So so the berm, every plant that we've uh we've projected to put on is an evergreen so that it stays green year round. So there's on this, there's um American holly, there's hemlock, there's green giants and the blue spruce. So e- every species that we have designed to implement on this would be an evergreen because we've chosen to keep some of the deciduous species that are on site. So we figured to plant all evergreens so that you screen this building relatively quickly.
Got it. Thanks. And just my next one is on on the gas pumps. So look, is there a picture of how the building looks with the gas pumps in front? Just want to confirm the number of pumps. And then two, what's the height of the canopy over the the gas pumps?
Yeah, Matt, the BB Development three sixty eight Plainville Ave. So I can answer some of that, and I'll defer to to Sev for any remaining questions. So there will be five dispensers. That's ten fueling positions. So uh it's not ten pumps. It's uh which would be twenty fueling positions. It's one, two, three, four, five. So one per island. Um instead of going with the layout uh like I believe Cumberland Farms has on Route six, which has two, four, six, which is twelve fueling positions. We've done five uh for ten. The canopy underside will be fifteen feet in height. Overall, the canopy is another three feet higher than that. So the top of the canopy will be around eighteen feet and the underside will be fifteen feet. Uh so this is to allow any legal vehicle uh to be able to enter the property without any concern of hitting the canopy. So that's that's how we've designed it. Uh I think I got most of them unless there's anything for Sev.
Now, is there any diesel or is it just unlimited, like a larger vehicle fill-ups?
Uh, there will be diesel. Um so that's to support you know, passenger vehicles. We are not proposing any high flow diesel vehicles um or high flow diesel dispensers um which kind of have a larger nozzle to accommodate faster fueling for trucks. Um so my other company does have a location on Route four, which does have high flow diesel dispensers. Uh there's no need uh for an additional one, especially in this location. I think we have it covered over on the more commercial side.
Got it. Okay, thank you. No no additional questions.
Thanks, Matt. How about you, Liz?
Uh, my question is uh regarding the DOT and the bypass uh lane. What's the timeline on a DOT decision? I know that could be uh could be a hard to pin down, but how long will we expect? Would you expect to wait to hear from them?
Uh generally, a review from the Department of Transportation could take um two to three months until you hear a final um recommendation. I- i- if we propose something and they didn't like it, they would tell us sooner. Um but you know, by the time they have comments on this and that, we revise and send it back. Uh when we get their first round of comments, we'll n- we'll know what we're looking at in terms of what the final uh design is going to look like. Uh as a whether or not we have a bypass lane, uh then it'll just be a matter of um making sure we nail down the design. So we'll know within uh two months at the at the at the outset, I think. Depending on how busy they are.
Okay. Uh, okay. And um just one other clarification question about the the canopy. So the if we were looking straight across the canopy, um I guess canopy and the top of the roof are about the same height. Is that correct? Or is the canopy a little the top of the canopy a little lower than the top of the?
This uh Charlie Nyberg, uh Chandler Sallinoff. This is something that I had thought about, and I guess perhaps the next time we do one of these, we'll we'll do this, or maybe we'll do this at CAD Revit and have a have a maybe a a better illustration. But yeah, the canopy will probably be per what uh Jay has indicated. Uh, the roof of the building at the gables will be slightly higher or higher by maybe a foot and a half than the top of the canopy. So what is effectively going to happen when you're on the street, if you were walking, uh you're going to be seeing this slash cutting across the face of the building. So it's going to be uh uh an edge of a of a canopy that's what, two to two and a half feet deep? Uh, and blocking a lot of that elevation of the building. Except for when you approach from, let's say, north to south, south to north, when you're looking at it on a bleak angle, you will tend to see the mass of the building on the on the uh north side or, you know, heading south or on the south side, heading north. But generally, once you're in the middle, uh the canopy is going to take over the look of the building. Is that bad? I'm not sure. I think architecturally, we've 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 tried to put this back into a mass that uh is, I think, typical, perhaps not of the single family, smaller houses directly across the street. But certainly of the, as I mentioned in the last presentation, the two the two story houses that are on the east side to the south of the site. I don't know if that answers the question, but that's kind of my perception of this.
Okay, that's that's what I um thought too. Okay, uh, thank you. No further question.
Thanks, Liz. James?
Uh, no questions. Uh more of a commentary. Um yeah, I I first of all, uh thanks to the applicant for the uh for the presentation and the reduction of the size of the building, I think. Um and then considering the uh the bypass lane on on a on Plainville Avenue there. Um, you know, that's certainly a direct response to what you guys heard um in in the last meeting. So thanks for that. Um I think, you know, I still have a little bit of a concern, you know, with the now thinking about the size of the canopy over the gas over the gas pumps, thinking that that's just gonna be kind of like huge, um you know, in comparison to whatever else is on the property. So I'm just like kind of thinking through that. Um and and there being a potential of maybe reducing the number of 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 gas banks there. Um just but again, it's more of just a just a comment on, you know, what the neighbors are gonna be potentially looking at. And I know that there was a concern about the size in the last meeting um from the neighbors directly across the street. So again, just more commentary than anything else. If it's a consideration that the applicant can consider, um just wanted to throw that out there as um, you know, just again, thinking about those neighbors across the street. But that's all I got.
I may be speaking out of turn here, but if I may, um we looked at different designs. So there is a perpendicular. This is what's called a dive in, where you have a single dispenser on an island and a car comes in and exits. Or putting them parallel to the street, um which would reduce the canopy width. Um, we felt that this was architecturally better because there will be uh dental molding on the canopy. It's otherwise plain white, so it'll kind of fit in nicely with the building. Uh but what happens, you have less traffic kind of queuing when the dispensers are parallel. Because in this layout, when a car enters, there's no real queue. You just go to the next available dispenser. Whereas if you put them parallel and you put them one behind the other, you're gonna see, first of all, the dispenser in its entirety. So you'll see two dispensers, whereas in this layout, you're only seeing kind of the edge and the focus is more on the architectural canopy. Um, and again, by putting the dispensers parallel, now you can create a little bit of a traffic. We've all been there where the pump in front is free, but there's somebody blocking the pump behind. So now you kind of have to wait. So I think you'll end up seeing more cars and stuff kind of stacking. Um, instead of, you know, kind of a nicer looking canopy. So that was kind of our opinion on on that. We we waited out just just as you did.
Okay, um, thanks, James. And uh Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Okay. Um, I have some questions. They're not in any specific order. Um, one question about the bypass lane. I maybe that's a Shannon question. Are we gonna lose? Is it gonna impact the sidewalk? That's on one seventy seven?
Uh, no. No, it won't. So you can see the sidewalk is um and black and white is here on the right hand edit edge of the page where the hand is. So the sidewalk is shown there. And then the the bypass, as Mr. Huskett uh indicated, is just uh two to five feet off that existing edge of curb. So they'll have to pull out all the curb, expand the roadway width, put in new curb. And as he noted, the driveway aprons will all have to be reset. But you can see there's a little squiggle line here. Yep. There's a couple of them on the way down. Um, those are the notations for utility poles. The utility poles won't have to be moved. There may be some um roadway edge signs that will have to be reset, but that's okay, fairly standard.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, thank you for increasing the buffer and um beefing up the buffer. Uh, I'm glad to see that the building is lower. Uh, you're still in a neighborhood. Um, I I still feel that and I please correct me, uh, Mr. Mehta, but I think the number of dispensers is still really uh it it's a lot for this area. We have thirteen gas stations in town. And there's only one other one uh on Spats, one pro the Cumberland Farms that has called dispensers. Uh, so I think it's a lot for this neighborhood. And um I was thinking of the traffic. And uh I know we were presented with data. Um, but for us commissioners that live here, uh in real in reality, if you're going through that part of town, you're you're often stuck at that intersection. Um, so I definitely agree that bypass lane is it it has to be there. Um I'm a little nervous about the size of it because of the next, you know, two topics from now is a it's a subdivision on Marea. And I um, you know, I I don't know if um Shannon would uh this group would have uh accounted for the traffic that Maria project may generate?
Uh, i- it's all background traffic and it's so far away that it's not, one really is not gonna have one an impact, significant impacts to the other. Uh, there's the gas station has noticeable amount of bypass traffic, which is indicative of vehicles that are already on the roadway. So think of um normally when we stop to get gas or go pick up milk, it's at a convenience store that we are already passing on our way to or from home, which is referred to um and and by traffic engineers is your bypass traffic. Great. We're not making a special trip for that. So um DOT allows up to, I think it's a fifty percent bypass rate, which is what the applicant has taken um has utilized as for these calculations. So uh it they're really a- again, um, somebody on Maria Road could easily be heading south to hit one of the gas stations on on Route six or to Bristol for that matter.
Yeah. I just think our town in general, I don't think any of our roads are set up for the traffic that we have. Um, so I I I, in my opinion, I think any addition to our roadways will impact uh the existing roads. But um I wanted to ask the applicant, and I don't know who the right person is online, um if we can talk a little bit about the uh remediation. So we have soil and groundwater that needs to be remediated. Is is that accurate or is it just soil? And like, how is that gonna be done?
The 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 currently, the uh the groundwater is attenuating, and we have wells located on the property for testing purposes. They're tested once a year. And the reports are sent to DEP um for uh record keeping purposes. Uh, we've seen an attenuation in the uh in the groundwater. The second part of this was soil remediation. And it's likely that when we take that building down and we take the island out where the existing uh where the former pumps were located, um Chevron seemed to think that we would find additional contamination there. Uh, they have a soil remediation plan in effect uh to uh handle that situation. And basically, what would uh what would occur is that that soil would then be trucked offsite and disposed of in accordance with the uh DEP regulations. So those are the two situations where we're we're foreseeing. Uh, the groundwater, we do not think is gonna be impacted. Uh, that's gonna continue to attenuate. However, the the soil will be uh in all likelihood remediated as we uh start to dig out there.
Okay. Okay. And then um the hours, please uh remind me, is it five to ten, seven days a week?
Jay, if you could speak on that, the hours?
It is, yes.
Okay, um so lighting, um I should have spent a little bit more time on it. I'm just thinking of the neighbors. I'm thinking of the light pollution, the canopy that we just talked about. Uh, is there anything um any features that can be added to help or um cast the lights downward or?
Yeah, Shannon, Shannon and and Bruce uh dealt with this uh, I think quite extensively in their comments to us. And our photometric plan indicates that uh there was no no light trespass. Uh, we do have um dimmers on all the lights. Uh, we do have, other than security lights, all other lights will be turned off when we close the uh the premises at ten o'clock at night. And I think that uh we've addressed uh the uh the other questions that the town had 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 put forth in their in their comments. And maybe Shannon or Bruce can uh maybe address that.
Uh, sure. Yes, uh, I believe the latest plan, there were dimmer switches on the lighting. I think there was one uh higher level location that worse than I had concern with, but the dimmer switches allow us to adjust that in the field. So that is the case. Okay.
I've worked with the lighting company. They have, you know, we did inform them that, you know, there there is surrounding residential. So they did adjust the lighting to be as less lit as as possible, but we do have the dimming functionality to adjust in field if there is a need to make it, you know, additionally less dim. Uh and and like Jim said, all the lighting will be turned off except for select emergency lighting, and that's inside the store. All the lighting outside will be turned off.
Fine, thank you. Um, I think it was the architect that mentioned cooking. What, there's going to be a food prep going on or like what kind of cooking do you think will be happening here?
I think at this point, uh Jay and I need to sit down and and go over all of this. Uh, it was something that, again, I know that you're 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 interested in how what we do inside affects equipment that's visual or seen from the exterior. However, at the stage that we're at of approval, uh, the site plan is the one that governs and the building itself is usually just the exterior that we're worried about and not how the interior works. So I think the 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 cooking is probably going to be, I'm going to say minimal. They're not, it's not a restaurant. So whatever uh whatever uh if they're doing a panini, if they're doing a if they're heating something, uh it may be that if we're not really cooking and we're only warming, uh, there may be a a condensate, a a a hood for uh warm air to be exhausted, and there's no NFPA type of hood uh warm air to be exhausted and there's no NFPA type of hood required. That will mitigate the need for this uh exterior uh exhaust hood that we have with the makeup air. So uh I I can't say that I know what it is, but I don't think it's going to be extensive at this point. Uh it's probably similar to what uh uh let's say a Cumberland Farm might have for cooking, and I don't think that's a large operation. They may be baking uh. So there might be an oven, which is gonna require uh again, heat removal rather than an NFPA type hood. But we've tried to show something for your consideration and indicate that if we do have cooking, uh again, it's not gonna be a ten burner range. If there is a range for cooking, it might be four burner. Uh possibly if they're gonna do any frying, I don't know that. It might be one fryer with a very small hood and a very small type of exhaust uh fan mounted up on the roof with makeup air. So again, whatever whatever we do, we've represented that we will make we will not make, we will not let any of that equipment be visible from uh the exterior of the building by putting it into these two mechanical equipment platforms that we've created. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm not sure I truly have
If I may.
Answer, or maybe Jay does.
If if I may, I think I can kind of capture the spirit of this. So I've driven by the site my whole life, probably four times a day. Ever since I was a little kid. So I think what we don't want is kind of a repeat of what's happened here. I think in nineteen fifty eight, I believe when the site was built as a Texaco, I think it stood as kind of at the time, kind of the current gold standard. And then we've seen, you know, over the last at least twenty something years that I can recall, uh you know, what what's happened there. So kind of what our intention with the site is to design it for the future to kind of avoid this happen again. So when it comes to the number of dispensers, we have enough, but we haven't gone overboard. We don't have six. We've scaled it back to five. At one point, I believe we've showed eight and ten two staff, but we've scaled it back to kind of a minimal amount that makes the whole project work. That also enables Shell to potentially come in and do the EV charging, which we've shown. Uh if so, this could be the first site in Connecticut where they will be doing their own EV charging onsite. So we kind of set up for whatever this energy transition may look like. And when it comes to the store, I think everybody kind of has an idea of what's in a convenience store um. And uh you know, we want to do something that's a little bit nicer. And again, you know, kind of set up for the future. So that will include some level of food service. Charlie and I haven't really gone over a menu and and kind of what equipment is involved with that. But that's kind of the spirit of this whole project is to set it up for the future. So we don't get what happened, what's already happened at the site.
Hmm. Well, thank you for the additional information. I just uh you know, we're we're here, right? Uh the commission is here to make sure that our neighbors are heard. We look at the traffic cir- circulation. I just hope what, you know, if this were to be approved today or the next meeting, whenever um we don't receive a change because all of a sudden uh we're stuck with what's approved. So um Shannon, for the cooking, non-cooking, prepping, like the the town would work with uh the applicant.
Yes, and only permits from Farmington Valley Health District. So anything, any food prep area uh has to have permits with Farmington Valley. Um and how we've usually handled it is if it's truly ancillary to the use, it'll come back before the commission typically under planner's report um for just a a review. Like we have the one that's got the ice cream, right? The ice cream just down the street. Uh the ice cream and small sandwiches that are being made. Um I believe, again, I have to go back to all my notes, but we generally start at the planner's report. Uh if it's not changing parking, they're not adding seating, right? Cause seating again, if somebody's just coming in, kind of a grab and go as they're getting their gas anyhow, then it's considered ancillary. When we get into seating and somebody's staying longer, then it kind of changes the perspective
I
of how this is going to function. So um regardless, anytime a change like that is made, it at least comes before the commission under planner's report. So the commission has the opportunity to review it. And then at that time, the commission can then elevate it to either a site plan or a public hearing.
Okay.
If they feel the change is significant enough that it warrants it.
Yeah.
Sometimes I do it just at the staff level, understanding that the change is hitting certain thresholds. But if it's questionable, it's always left with the commission for that decision.
This is Charlie. This is Charlie again. Yes, uh we've been doing a number of these uh not gas station or service. I wanna, it's not it's a it's a fueling station. Uh so what and Shannon is right, what what starts the process is the menu. What is your menu? What is the equipment that supports the menu? And then that goes to the health department for a review. They then come back and say, great, all this equipment is fine, or this is really, you need an extra piece of something here, or this should be a slightly larger piece of equipment for this. So that's that's the process on which the kitchen or cooking area would be developed.
Thank you. And uh Shannon, um the doc- some of this documentation, I feel like came in last minute. Do we have everything from the applicant? Do we know?
They have addressed all the questions. I do have one question for them if I
Go ahead.
Uh so Attorney Diogus, we we had some conversations, Bruce and I, earlier today with the applicant. Um and it stems around, I want uh I think we need to clarify what the how the dumpsters are going to be enclosed in the transformer and um EV panel. The enclosure and whether or not there's the need for their arborvitae screening around them. Uh basically, in general, if it's a if it's gonna be a chain link fence and chain link gates, then the arborvitae need to stay. If it's a solid stockade fence, um then the commission may agree that those arborvitae do not need to stay. So I just, we need that wasn't touched upon during the presentation, so I want to make sure that that gets entered into the record.
Thank you, Shannon. Sev, can you address that for us?
I cannot hear. The audio is very low. Uh okay, do you uh louder a little bit?
I think Jim, I think Kurt can uh address that if if you may.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Yes, so today when we sat down with Bruce and Shannon, I I asked the question that if we put a, and I'm gonna call it a white poly, even though my suggestion would be a light gray with white trim poly fence around the dumpster, very attractive dumpster uh device to to keep the trash wind out and all of that. And I said, why do we need to put ARBs to hide a beautiful fence to hide a dumpster? Can we just do ARBs or can we just do a fence? And Shannon said that the fence would would actually be better because it keeps the trash and stuff in. And all we would be doing is hiding a fence that's very attractive with ARBs. So my question was, can we just eliminate the ARBs? Because the fence that I suggested for Jay to put in is a is a very attractive fence.
So that would be on the record. I think we would be okay doing just the fence then if the
So it would be a it would be a stockade fence to screen the dumpster, recycling bin, transformer and the uh the uh EV panel.
In lieu of the arborvitae. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just, again, Charlie, uh the transformer, I'm not I'm not a hundred percent sure that you can enclose the transformer based on the utility companies need to change it out. Usually what happens with the transformer, you shield it with uh ballers to prevent somebody from running into it. But it's certainly something that we could investigate. And if the utility company had no issue with providing a, again, a a stockade vinyl gray screen with white trim around it, we could certainly do that.
Okay, even if it's left open towards the uh parking lot, but screened on three sides would
That's probably, that would probably be all right, Shannon. I I think that again, I know that most of the transformers where we've been involved have 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 had ballers around them and no fencing, but certainly uh you're probably right. As long as we provide the correct clearance from the transformer to a a fence on three sides, and then it's open on the front where they could get at it and change it out if they needed to, uh that should be fine. But again, we could work, we can work with staff on that as well.
Okay.
That is acceptable to us, Shannon.
Thank you.
I really didn't want to go there, but I guess we're going there. Do we, the whole EV charger? Do we have other places? And do we have regs specific to EV chargers?
Uh there are other locations on private properties. Office buildings are putting them in on a number of locations. Um there are not, there are, no, I mean, it's basically what's needed for them. And there's different types of EV chargers. There's different
My like screening, I'm just wondering if it's something
Well, the EV chargers themselves, we're not screening the EV. The EV charger is a pedestal that typically is um uh you know, looks, it's bigger than a uh um than a sign, you know, like a handicap and ADA sign, but it's not uh uh yeah, that so the EV charger isn't isn't getting char uh screened, cause you need the access for the vehicle and the plug and the all that. This equipment is a little different. Um and uh Mr. Meta, please come uh, you know, correct me if I misspeak on this, but many of these instances uh where it's at an office building, the power is being pulled from the office building, right? It's part of the panel and it's being pulled from the office building and being supplied there. And some of them have the ability to, some of it is is just supplied by the office, right? As a courtesy to their employees. Some of it you can pay for. There's a card swipe, whether it's a credit card or an online uh pay app on your phone, et cetera. Um this, I'm not sure the payment of it, but because Shell itself is intending to install the EV chargers, not Mr. Meta, there's a separate transformer and panel because it's not being pulled, the power isn't being pulled from the building. It's so there's a separate transformer and panel for this to provide the electrical power for the EV chargers that are located towards the north end of the parking area. So that's why there's an additional panel and transformer. So at some point, there'll be a separate transformer on the building unless it's gonna be a pole-mounted transformer to feed the building. So so we could end up with two transformers, two ground-mounted transformers on the building, on the property, on the property.
That's all correct. If I if I may just add one more note. So if anyone on the commission or if anyone on this call does drive an EV, one of the gripes with it is it's sometimes difficult to find a working EV charger. So I'll add the reason we've gone this way rather than work with ever source and try to put in our own chargers is uh the maintenance and upkeep and keeping them running uh has been problematic for people across the country. So by having Shell directly manage the charge, the the chargers, uh we we thought is a better solution, and that's the one that we are trying to move towards. So with that, it does necessitate their own transformer and their own electrical. So that's that's correct.
How long um does it is, does it take to charge?
So the chargers that they are proposing is DC fast chargers. So you know, again, I I can't speak to this exactly. Um but I our hope is rather than have people sitting there for two hours and queue up with a DC fast charger, if they can get a fifteen, a ten or fifteen, twenty minute charge, that should be enough for them to go on their way.
Just, I'm just thinking of the residential and I don't know, EV like electric magnetic waves just in general. Um I guess, you know, um we have electric cars now, right? So this is a nice convenience.
It'll be a convenience to residents who have EVs but can't, because we're not off a highway here. So this is not really a destination charger. Uh this is really a charger for maybe residents in the area who have an EV and need to go on their way. And perhaps, you know, they're working on installing it at their home or they they for some reason cannot. Uh so this would really be kind of a neighborhood amenity for somebody looking to move to to EVs once this is up and running. It's just the kind of locations that it that it is.
Thank you. All right. So uh this is a public hearing. Um let's uh turn it over to see if there's anyone in the public that may have called in with questions, comments about this project. Um Shannon, if you can help you with that.
Sure. I just, I do want to note for the record that there, we did not receive any additional written correspondence.
Okay.
So with that, then we'll turn to uh anyone that may have uh called in. If you are on the call to offer comment regarding this application for BB development at three sixty eight Plainville Avenue for the convenience store with fueling locations, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you will be acknowledged to address the commission with any questions or comments that you have. Okay, I'll try one more time. Anyone that's called in to the meeting for BB Development, three sixty eight Plainville Avenue. If you have called in to offer a question or comment to the commission regarding this matter, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay. Uh we do have a few hands raised. So uh Kus- Kuswara Usman, if you can unmute your microphone, uh name and address, please, and address the commission.
Yes, hi there. Um so my name is Kuswara Usman. I'm at uh we six, it's a moment. Um three, three, four Plainville Avenue, um right next door actually, and um also on the parcel um up front line five, five, three. So um I just have a couple concerns. Um but first, I just want to ask some questions, cause I I thought this was actually gonna be towards the end of the meeting. Um so I missed a little bit of it. So how much is the size being reduced?
Uh it's been reduced, the building width has been reduced from forty-five feet to forty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the length has remained the same at eighty-four feet. So there's a five foot reduction and uh so roughly a four hundred square foot change.
Okay, in terms of the height of the building, has that has that been reduced as well?
Yes, the height of the building was reduced by uh approximately seven feet through the main portion of the building. The gables have remained uh the same. So the highest point of the building had been at twenty-seven feet. It's now down at twenty-one. And the entire entire building height basically is at twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. And then um I have a concern, cause on the parcel at the front of property, I actually I have my private well. So if something were to happen uh during the construction of this, or even after, if maybe there was a gas leak, as was with the previous uh gas station, uh how would I go about, what would be the process in um resolving that issue? With the private.
I believe that would start with Farmington Valley Health. So Farmington Valley Health has jurisdiction over the private private wells. So uh your concerns would be addressed to them initially uh for further investigation. And then if needed, DEP would be notified and brought into the matter.
Okay. And then in terms of noise, um so this is gonna be twenty-four hours?
I know the applicant has represented that the hours of operation are from five AM to ten PM.
Okay. Okay, that's all of my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Wow, okay. Deb Woodall?
Hi, I'm Deb Woodall at three thirty-one Plainville Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep, please go ahead.
Um I I it's not directly across from me, but I know you're talking about um the trees behind the building, blocking the um view for the people back there, blocking the lights and stuff like that. But how about across the street on the um east side, I guess, the Plainville Avenue there? Um are, you know, how are their light, are their lights gonna be shining towards their property into their living room and their bedrooms and stuff? Or are the lights on that bank that you see that borders Plainville Avenue shining towards the building? Uh, does that make sense?
Yep, no. So the uh uh Jim, do you or Sev wanna uh handle take the first shot at that and then I can chime in if needed?
Sure, Asev, why don't you talk about the landscape buffer that's going to exist on Plainville Avenue? Sure, Asev, why don't you talk about the landscape buffer that's going to exist on Plainville Avenue? And also um, Jay, if you might chime in as, as to where your light packs are and where they're going to be directed.
Sure, I think if, if I can start with the light pack, so uh, the way they've been designed is to maintain all the lighting onsite, so we've had uh, the company that makes the lights also can do the lighting plan, so it's not a separate engineer. There's no real mismatch between the lighting plan and uh, you know, the actual lights that we installed, so everything's been designed to maintain the light onsite uh, as, as safely but as minimally as possible. Um, so the lighting is dimmed down, I believe at some points it's dimmed down eighty percent uh, from where the manufacturer has it. Uh, in terms of the lights going across the street, we've designed kind of a landscape buffer that'll turn to curth for that.
So what we, what we've designed in the, in the front to mitigate uh, lights and vehicles or from coming off the property, there's groups of cooter dog retreat, they have a dense foliage and then um, a holly that is salt, um, that takes the salt because obviously one seventy-seven, they saw the road splash of things, so the, the front landscape is designed to, to address car lights and, and anything under fifteen feet of, of lighting to come off that site.
So in the canopy, uh, the canopy has reset, this is Shannon Rutherford, the town planner, just to supplement the answer provided. So the canopy has recessed uh, lighting and uh, we have reviewed the photometrics plan and will, uh, with the dimmer switch avail- um, ability, we have the ability to go back out after it's installed and monitor to make sure that the light levels don't exceed what had been proposed uh, at the time that they submitted the plans.
Okay, the um, the reason I'd asked about the front there by Plainville Avenue, I was, I sat through the whole meeting last time and I thought those were just going to be low hedges, that's why not big bushes or anything like that, so um, I, and I, I liked Severa missed the beginning of this meeting because I thought you were on later. Um, but anyway, the uh, so at least it does seem like that's blocking it, I, it just felt bad for the people living across the street. Um, at last time I spoke about my traffic concerns and I have to say I live where I live, we're stuck on that road, I, or in my house, I can't pull out of my driveway because of all the traffic off Plainville Avenue. I, even with the widening of the road and all that, I, I think we're still going to end up with a big bottleneck there, but I, I'm not, I'm ignorant of this, I'm hoping that the zoning commission knows what, you know, knows it better than I do.
Thank you, thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, has anyone else called in that would like to offer comment regarding the uh, project at three sixty-eight Plainville Avenue for the convenience store with fueling locations? If anyone's called in that wants to offer comment, please raise your hand, you'll be acknowledged uh, to do so, to address the commission. Madam Chair, at this point, there's no other hands raised.
Alright, commissioners.
Madam Chairman, before you close that portion of it out and, and go back to your chairman, can I make just a few comments in summation? And then you, the commissioners can do what they may.
Sure.
Thank you. The uh, the request here is for a special permit and a site plan. And in accordance with your regulations, the standards for the granting of such a special permit uh, basically have to deal with certain things, uh, existing and future characteristics of the neighborhood would be protected. Uh, we certainly think that the landscape buffer uh, and the landscaping perimeter of the property is designed uh, to do that, recognizing that the property is zone commercial. So that the anticipation of the town uh, was always that something commercial would go into this site. Uh, that is the plan, we provided the safeguards, we've increased the buffers. Uh, I think we've lowered the height of the building, we've taken into consideration of the uh, characteristic of the neighborhood by the design of the building in terms of its, its uh, characteristics and its um, a colonial design. In addition, again, another standard is the safeguards uh, to protect the neighbors, again, we're asking about landscaping, landscaping buffer, reduction in lighting, design of the building, all of these are in compliance uh, with your regulations. You, you, you mentioned in your standards, the traffic circulation uh, within the site. Our traffic circulation within our site certainly works. Our deliveries uh, will be outside of peak area so that there will not be any traffic um, going out into the road in order to get gasoline deliveries. The internal circulation of this property will allow delivery by WB fifty uh, vehicles, uh, which is all that's required, in addition to box trucks, which are certainly smaller than that. Uh, as I said, the delivery of fuel and trash will have been restricted uh, in their hours, we will notify our, our delivery people of that and they will not take place during the uh, peak hours. The roadwork net, network is capable of handling the increases in traffic. Our traffic engineer has testified at length to that. Uh, we think that uh, to make the situation better, uh, we've included a bypass lane on one seventy-seven. Uh, we hope that that gets approved by DOT, uh, and that will alleviate some of the concerns uh, of our neighbors. Again, I mentioned previously that the building density is roughly five percent of the entire site, so it's not a a high density uh, project that we're proposing here, uh, and we certainly think it's in keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, for all of those reasons, uh, we think that we're in compliance with the standards set forth in your zoning regulations. Uh, and we'd ask the committee to approve this uh, application, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, commissioners, uh, I want to make sure you are satisfied with the information you received before I close the public hearing. Uh, let's run through everyone, uh, Mike, you have any final questions?
I have no questions, and just for the record, I will not be voting on this.
No, and that's um, and I forgot, uh, because uh, I'm sure my girl, Gurbilis was on at the last meeting, so we would
um, so James.
Would be an available voting member.
Alright, and you've been here, James, so that's good.
Yeah, I'm prepared.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just keep it to this and then I have more questions, uh, how about you Scott, any more questions?
I do not, thank you though.
Alright, Matt?
Uh, sorry, quick one, so the, the dimmer switch for the lights, the dimming only occurs after ten PM is, or, or after operating hours, is that fair to say?
Uh, just a small point of clarification, so the lights have a dimmer functionality, meaning we can dim them down. Uh, I believe our lighting plan does show them at some dim capacity. Uh, I think, you know, we're okay working, uh, you know, I, I, we've kept that dimming functionality in case there is any, any further issues or any issues that there's too much light. Uh, after hours, all the exterior lights will be off, except any small lighting inside the gasoline pump. Negligible, uh, and anything maybe inside the building just for safety as staff reenters. So all the lights will be, will be off otherwise after hour.
And Commissioner, if I might add, I think Shannon uh, mentioned this in her comments is that once the building is constructed and completed, uh, the uh, staff will go out there and check the lighting to make sure it's in compliance with what we planned. And the purpose of the dimmer is to make that adjustment so that we're in compliance and that it's not overlit. So the, the, the dimmer comes into play um, from a design standpoint and, and the town will, will review that and make sure it's adequate.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. How about you Liz, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no more questions, thank you.
Sure, James?
No questions.
Alright, and Mike?
No questions.
Okay. Alright, so at this point, uh, we advanced the commissioner questions, we went out to the public. Let's uh, close the public hearing, Shannon, for the record. Um, since there's nothing else that we requested uh, from the applicant, how are we doing on time, Shannon, for the rest of our meeting? Is, do we, we can go ahead and?
So it's up to the commission that they want, so we still have two public hearings to address, so we, we've closed this.
Yep.
We, the commission now has uh, sixty-five days to render a decision. So we can have it on to deliberate or, and or vote at the next meeting under old business, but there are two other public hearings to
That, that is my preference, um. Yeah, yeah. So commissioners, that, we, we have the information, we asked our questions, but are the deliberation and voting, um, I would like to do that at the next meeting, are you okay with it? Um, I know Mike, go ahead.
It works for me, I don't know if you're going in order, but that works for you.
That works for you, or you?
That works for me if it works for you.
Wow, thank you, Matt. Alright, uh, Scott?
Yes, that works for me, I think a lot of new information. I'd like to consider, I think voting next time makes sense.
Okay, how about you Liz, you're comfortable with uh, making a decision next time?
Uh, I think that's a good call, yes, next time.
Alright, James?
I'm comfortable either way.
Okay, and Mike Walsh?
I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay, and actually, well, Mike wasn't here, so we have the majority, um, Shannon, please count for me, but, but majority is okay with uh, making the decision next time.
So that's, so we, we can continue, it's the next meeting, it'll be fall under old business.
Okay.
To, uh, so there is no motion, it just well, it'll fall under old business then for the uh,
Okay.
For the next meeting.
Thank you, everyone, uh, for the information, the applicant, all, all, uh, the entire team, we appreciate your time and uh, we will see you in Mar- March twenty-seventh, right?
Yes.
March twenty-seventh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, the next uh, public hearing item in front of us is an application from M Co Development LLC. It's an application for special permit to, uh, for construction of a home in excess of two thousand two hundred square feet on lot eight, five, seven, two Oakland Avenue in the R nine OG zone, and who do we have today?
We have Andrew Morris for M Co Development.
Hello.
How you doing, Andrew Morris for M Co Development?
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So what we're proposing to do on this lot is to build a house of two thousand and ninety square feet with a total of two thousand six hundred fifty-eight square feet, which includes the space for the garage. We took all the square footages for the street. There are four other houses on Oakland Avenue that have two thousand square feet or more, so we wanted to make sure that this house blends in with the neighborhood. So in our opinion, this proposed house blends in well with the other houses in the neighborhood, we had a garage that was here, we had to demolish it, and now we have an open lot, we're looking to put the proposed house up.
Okay, um, are you gonna, are we gonna go through all of it or the heights, or what is the um, what is the number to keep it within, Shannon?
So the regulation uh, for our expanded home, the maximum living area would be sixteen hundred square feet and maximum total area, which would include garages, twenty-two hundred square feet, anything over that requires a special permit with TPZ.
Okay.
So the living area is approximately four hundred square, four hundred and ninety square feet over and the total area is four hundred and fifty-eight square feet over.
Thank you, okay. Okay, and I know we were given the um, plans. Um, okay. Probably the height, I mean, I'm just trying to, I don't want to, there should be some maybe basic elevation.
Mr. Morris, can you provide, what's the total, I know we've got the floor heights, but can you give the total heights, I don't think I, I'm aware of that, to the peak? You happen to know what that is offhand?
Floor height should be about twenty-six feet plus or minus.
To the peak.
That's correct.
Which would be fine, because then we measure to the midway on the
Okay, okay.
So we don't measure to the peak and measure.
Thank you, yep. I guess commissioners can, if they have questions, right, we can go through, or uh, the public, excuse me. Uh, alright, so um, thank you uh, for the information, um, we were given the plan, so thank you for giving us this in advance, uh, commissioners, let's go through uh, questions for, for the applicant. Alright, uh, Mike Gurbilis, you have any questions regarding this, this property?
My question, uh, page two of the application with the uh, the lot sizes or the house sizes. I see there's only, you know, four over two thousand, that two thousand square feet, is that livable space or is that the total?
The two thousand square feet is livable square footage, it doesn't include any garage space. So to compare apples and apples, the home we're proposing is two thousand and ninety square feet, plus the garage.
Okay, so do, do we have the numbers of what these other houses are total square feet?
Those numbers weren't available on the property cards when I looked.
Okay.
One, one second, Mike, uh, Shannon is going to try to look it up on G I S.
Some of them have garages and some of them don't in this area, so let's see what we can.
Sure.
Yep.
See how, well, our online system is going to cooperate to, so we've got forty-two and forty sixteen and eighteen. There's a garage. So the living area was twenty-twenty and the garage is another four hundred and sixty-two. Looking at twenty-four, twenty-four eighty roughly total.
That's forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then.
Forty.
Shoot.
Did you close it?
I did, I hit the wrong button.
It's okay. We're here for you, Shannon.
It's fun when you click out of the wrong tab, and when you've got multiple tabs open, sorry, everybody. I'm going to try this again, hopefully I don't make the same mistake twice, which I've been known to do, so we'll see. Okay, forty. Details. Is two thousand forty-seven square feet and a garage area of five hundred, we're going to round off. So we're at twenty-five forty, so just under, say twenty-five forty-five for uh, for that. And um,
Sixteen and eighteen, yeah.
Shannon, you, you don't have to go through all of them, that's okay.
Oh, no, there's just two, so we'll, we'll have one more, how's that? Uh, this one might be tough because it's a basement garage, it might not break it out, uh, sometimes it'll break them out. So that one's two thousand living area and yeah, they call out the garage, but because it's a basement garage, it doesn't, it's other doesn't calculate it the same way, so I can't access it in the same fashion, so. But that's, and then this home twenty-two, the living area because these are ones that I looked at, because that's right across the street, so you can see the house and then the garage, it's a detached garage. So the uh, the detached garage is almost a thousand square feet, so it's nine sixty um, with a living area of sixteen fifty-six, so you're still looking at a total building area when you, if you merge them together uh, over twenty-five hundred, almost twenty-six hundred square feet, so.
Okay, yeah, that was helpful, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, I, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Scott?
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Alright, Matt?
No questions, thank you.
Alright, and Liz?
No, thank you, no question.
Okay, uh, James?
No questions.
And Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Wow, okay, that's good, that's good, um. I don't, um, thank you for clarifying the height and thank you Shannon for explaining that. I did drive through uh, the neighborhood, I haven't been here in a little while. Um, it's just all, just, it's tight, right, high density, um. I, I don't, um, I do feel that it fits the neighborhood. Um, and you, um, And you, um, I was, um, thinking about the garage. Was the garage demolished? It's just for my, for my information. I thought I still saw a garage there, no?
Some of the older area plans may show the garage, but the garage was demolished last summer.
Okay, well, never mind. Okay, like I said, I, I drove there today, but it's okay. Um, I do not have any specific questions about this application, so Shannon, if we can, uh, turn it over to the public to see if anyone actually the communication, any correspondence?
There has been no written correspondence on that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, with that then, if anyone's called in to offer comment or questions regarding the application at, uh, eight five seven two Oakland Avenue for expanded home by Amco Development, please raise your hands and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. So if anyone has a question or comment regarding the application at eight five seven two Oakland Avenue, please raise your hands and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, there's Adrian. Put your hand, or if you can provide, Adrian, you can unmute your microphone. Uh, please provide your full name and address for the commission.
I live at seventeen Oakland Avenue.
I'm sorry, Adrian, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. You were a little away from your microphone. Can you start over for us, please, with your name and address?
My name is Adrian McElveen at seventeen Oakland Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm two properties away from the, uh, subject property. And I just have a question. Will there be any blasting?
Not to our knowledge, no.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Uh, and just, uh, Adrian, for clarification, if for whatever reason they find out they do need to blast, then that would be a separate permit in a separate public hearing, and you would have the opportunity to offer comment and questions, uh, at that time. So sometimes when they start the excavation, there's, they, they hit an unknown. Uh, but that would require another public hearing and permit, so. Um.
Thank you.
Of course. Uh, anyone else that's called in regarding eight five seven two Oakland Avenue, please raise your hand. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission.
I know, I saw.
Okay, Madam Chair, at this point, there's no other hands raised regarding the Oakland app, application.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, before I close the public hearing, do you have final questions for the applicant? All right, at this point, um, I would like to close the public hearing on this application. And based on the questions and, um, the plans, it sounds like we're ready to vote. So I need a motion and a second, please.
Okay, this is Liz Sanford. Uh, I make a motion to approve the application by Amco Development LLC for a special permit to construction, for construction of a home in excess of two thousand two hundred square feet on lot eight five seven two Oakland Avenue in the R nine O G zone.
Thank you, and a second?
Second, Mike Walsh.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. Uh, thank you, and you'll be hearing from town staff?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too, you too. Okay, and the final, uh, public hearing item in front of us is, uh, an application from Carrier Group Incorporated for a twenty-five lot cluster subdivision on lots eighty-five seventeen and, and eighty-five eighteen on Morea Road. And Shannon, I'm sure we have lots of folks in line.
We have a few. Uh, Chris Hoewe, are you gonna start us off this evening with this application?
Yes, I'm ready. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
All right. Well, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Christian Hoewe, and my office is located uh, three fourteen Main Street here in Farmington. And with me this evening is Tom Daley, a licensed professional engineer from SLR, and he's the United States Manager of Civil and Structural Engineering. And also from SLR is Emily Foster, who will testify regarding traffic. To bring you up to speed, the original application was hand-delivered to staff months, a long time ago. Mailing notice is complete. The, uh, receipts have been submitted to the town. Maps, plans, reports have been timely filed with town staff. The sign was posted and has been maintained. Notices were published. And throughout the process, we've been in communication with town staff, including Mrs. Rutherford and Mr. Seer, trying to keep them up to date as much as we can, uh, making changes and responding to comments. We have a set of plans from February that no doubt will need to be updated based on the comments from engineering. So you can anticipate that, and those would be upgrades. Some of them are small. Uh, some of them are bigger, but we're working with staff on those. So to, tonight, we're gonna present the, uh, initial aspects of this application uh, primarily through the testimony of Tom Daley and Emily Foster. Uh, the, uh, goal is not to use up all of our time by, to reach eleven. We're gonna try to be as efficient as possible, but we do have a record to establish. We want you to feel insured that you've gotten all the information from us. Um, the last set plan was two ten twenty-three. And I feel very confident we'll be updating those and submitting, uh, after tonight's hearing. I just, before I turn it over to, uh, Tom Daley, I have a couple opening remarks I think are salient for this evening, and just give me one moment. Okay, so I'd like to spend several minutes introducing the applicant to you. Uh, not everyone is aware of the carriers uh, or their his, building history. So the Carrier family has been working in all aspects of residential home building since the six, nineteen sixties, nineteen sixties. More recently, the carriers have focused on complete home building and land development. Throughout their history, the Carrier family has become well-known for their excellent construction predicated on old-fashioned values, hard work, and really good quality craftsmanship. Uh, integrity really has been the cornerstone of their success. The next generation of carriers are now most active within the family organization. John Carrier and the Carrier family have received numerous building and construction awards. The applicant is also recognized for building Energy Star Efficient Homes. The Energy Star designation is the trusted government-backed symbol for superior energy uh, efficiency rating. So their energy-efficient homes always include uh, basic items that are high efficiency, such as gas furnaces, air conditioning, tankless hot water heaters, high-performance vinyl clad wood and low-e windows, among many other, uh, characteristics of their construction. The carriers are extremely proficient in their construction, and they do provide an industry-leading five-year warranty for new home construction. In the last ten to twenty years, this applicant has successfully built homes in, uh, let me, let me remember the list. Farmington, of course, Plainville, Burlington, Cromwell, Cheshire, Glastonbury. Uh, it, it should be noted also that the carriers are constructing homes in Farmington where, wherein they are in close proximity to wetlands, so that they are well-versed in the construction protocols anticipated by this application. Bringing your attention to this specific property, I'm hopeful you can appreciate that the current owner has been inundated by sale offers from out-of-town building companies, including national chain builders. The current owners felt it was critical that they identify a builder with integrity and a profound appreciation for the land. The owners, having completed a thorough evaluation process, selected Mr. Carrier to develop the property. The cluster concept accomplishes the desire of the present owners to preserve as much of the land as possible. The cluster concept that you will see tonight contemplates the construction of twenty-five homes while preserving the balance of eighty-eight acres for permanent open space. I believe the open space, uh, pro offer is seventy-one acres. Plus or minus a tad, but pretty close to seventy-one. It should be noted now that the cluster application was approved by the Town of Farmington Inland Wetlands Commission. The capital, uh, also the Capital Region Council of Governments, the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, and the Connecticut D E E P uh, have communicated with town staff, and those letters are already submitted as part of the record. I'm just gonna, I, I know you've reviewed the package of materials and you've looked at these letters. We feel they're overall very supportive. I just took out one sentence from the most recent one, which came from the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, and they wrote, "Staff therefore concur with the recommendation of CROG that the proposed subdivision will have no regionally significant effects and no apparent intermunicipal impacts for the city of Bristol, which is the abutting municipality within the region." And I encourage you to take the time to look at the letters from CROG, Nagatuck Valley. You can review the decision of the inland wetlands. And, um, so I think that's really, I came away feeling they were very supportive. Throughout the application process, the applicant and his experts have fully communicated and cooperated with town staff, providing information, reports, responses. In an effort to be fully transparent and communicate fully with the neighbors, Mr. Carrier notified neighbors within the two-hundred-foot radius of the property to attend, uh, to conduct an informal meeting to discuss the application. That meeting occurred on February twenty-third at the Town of Farmington Community Center. Approximately twelve neighbors attended, and Mr. Carrier discussed the application and he answered questions from the neighbors. At all times, Mr. Carrier has been and is available to discuss the application with any neighbor directly. In this application, the regulation pertaining to this is, can be found in Article Two, Section Nineteen of your regulations, which states that, quote, "The purpose of this section is to provide flexibility in the development of land in order to provide greater preservation and protection of open space and other valuable natural resources while permitting a variation in lot design and building requirements." In several minutes, and I'm trying to talk quickly, uh, Tom Daley will compare the initial conventional plan, subdivision plan, and what we're bringing this evening, which is a cluster presentation. In addition, the conventional R forty layout has a much larger footprint than the cluster being presented this evening. We believe, and it's our position, the cluster being proposed this evening provides significant open space to the community. As part of the inland wetlands application process, which occurred last year, the applicant submitted expert testimony, exhibits, and evidence to the inland wetlands commission, seeking permission to engage in permit-regulated activities with, within a hundred and fifty-foot upland review area. The applicant furnished numerous reports in sort of, in support of the application, including the proposed cluster subdivision plans, test pit logs, proposed floodplain compensation calculations, wetland assessment and impact analysis, a vernal pool study, a drainage report, and natural diversity dat- database letter from NDB. The commission itself walked the site with staff, and after two eating, meetings of, two evenings of testimony, the Wetlands Commission approved the application five to one. That was in July of two thousand twenty-two. The, that commission, the inland wetlands commission included twenty-three conditions which the applicant accepted. Some of the conditions included periodic reviews throughout the construction process, as well as post-construction review and analysis. The amount of detail and specificity of the conditions underscores the Wetlands Commission's effort to mitigate any possible negative effects of this proposal. After the approval by the commission and a budding neighbor filed an appeal with, uh, with the court, and the Town of Farmington through legal counsel moved to dismiss the complaint on several technical deficiencies. The neigh, the appealing neighbor never appeared at the court-scheduled matters, and the court entered a non-suit. Um, as an aside, I should note, and, and I'm sure Mr. Daley will report this as well, the homeowners association that will be established if, when this is approved, will maintain private roads, uh, maintain buffer, and it'll have an ongoing requirement that maintenance reports be filed with the town annually by January thirty-first of every year, which I think ensures, um, really, uh, uh, high level of maintenance and diligence by the town and by the applicant. Uh, I'm gonna return to, to speak to you, and at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Daley, and then, uh, we'll talk about traffic, then I'll come back to me. So, Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, yes, for the record, Tom Daley with SLR Consulting. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. Um, Shannon, next slide? So, uh, Chris did a nice job to provide a foundation of the application, and we'll walk you through some more of the technical merits of the application. And then, um, on that. So first of all is, let's talk about the location of the parcel. Uh, the parcel is, this is a copy of the town's GIS mapping. Uh, north is pointing straight up. Uh, the part, the property of question this evening is actually two properties. Uh, the more square, the northern property is, uh, known as eight eighty-five seventeen Morea Road, and that's approximately forty-five acres. Then the long, thin one, um, is, is eighteen, uh, sorry, um, eight five one eight Morea Road, and that's approximately forty-two acres. So you're, you're looking about just shy of, uh, eighty-eight acres of, of land part of this application. Uh, Morea Road is running directly, uh, along our, um, our southern border. Basically, that is our frontage. Uh, to the, to the right or to the east is Plainville Ave. To the north, um, northeast is Snowberry Cobble. And then to, um, to the west, it actually, our western broth property line is, um, matching the town line. So the Town of Bristol is directly to our west. And then directly to the north, we have undeveloped, uh, open space that's owned by the Town of Farmington. And directly to the south is, um, a, another cluster subdivision that was approved in the eighties, early eighties, and that's generally known as Tall Timbers and Cove Farms. Uh, next slide? To give you some of, uh, to building, build upon what Chris talked about, some, some background on, on the, on, uh, the application. So first of all, the parcels are zoned R forty, so potentially a one-acre zoning. Um, but under the cluster subdeban, subdivision regulations, uh, you are permitted to have a lot size of, uh, fifteen thousand square foot minimum. As I said, Tall Timbers and Cove Farms directly to our south uh, was also developed under the same cluster subdivision, and about nineteen eighty-two is what the data of the plans were. As part of our application, we had to do, one, it basically, uh, the terms of the density of, uh, permitted is, is looked at in two different ways. One, it's a zoning calculation that is very, uh, kind of thorough. It makes you discount wetlands, steep slopes, look at the overall. I believe it also then goes on to discount other, uh, areas like, um, roadways. And under that calculation, we are permitted forty lots, but that's just a calculation. In addition to that, your reg, your regulations require us to put together a conventional subdivision and, and show that what we can get there. And I think if you look at your staff review report, essentially, it's the, it's the underlying, um, uh, subdivision that kind of sets the density. Um, while the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet, our average lot size is twenty-one thousand square feet. So we have lots that, that, um, are at fifteen thousand, and then we have lots that, that go up as much as, uh, up to about thirty-five thousand square feet. Uh, there is no dimensional wafers, so under your regulations, um, with a, uh, I believe a five-six vote, this commission has the ability to reduce lot sizes and road frontage. Initial, our initial application had a few lots that had a small, uh, waiver request for the frontage. Um, the revised plans do not require that, so there is no request for, uh, waivers under your cluster subdivisions. Um, one of the benefits of this, uh, cluster subdivision is we do not have any lots fronting on Morea Road. They're all front- They are all fronting on a new private road system. If you compare the lot area in a cluster subdivision versus a traditional subdivision, it's about fifty percent less area that's encumbered in the lots. And ultimately, that results in more open space. So as Chris indicated, about seventy, seventy-one acres are going to be dedicated contiguous open space. And contiguous is important because it essentially, it's the Scott Swamp watershed and that corridor that is essentially one big block of open space. We will have private roads, but I, I will say that the roads, while private, will be constructed of the pavement thickness, the road construction. Those other details will actually be built to town road standards. So the roads are privately maintained and owned, but ultimately, they built, they are built of the same quality and standard of, of the public roads. We do have access, and we will be proposing public water and sewer in, in the project site. Next slide. And tonight, we're primarily focused on eighty-five eighteen Maria Road. That's the long, thin parcel. You can see the, just off to the north here is the, that additional forty-five acres. That is, while it is part of our application, it is simply fully dedicated as open space. That forty-five acres is fully open space, so we're not proposing any improvements on that forty-five acres. So we're primarily focusing on the land that's the forty, forty-two acres that adjacent Maria Road. The two, the twenty-five lots are, are really laid out in two completely distinct areas. So I kind of call them east and west, and we'll walk you through those on that. But it's a long, thin parcel, so we broke it out in our plans there. But as you can see on this plan, we have east and west on, on the layout, and then we'll walk you through. So, next slide. So first of all, let's talk about the east side. The east side is, the smaller the two cul-de-sacs. We have seven lots that are located in here. Topographically, we have a high, on the right-hand side, or the, the eastern side of the site is the highest topography, and it slopes down to the wetlands, which are located on the western side. So it's a right, right is your highest side, left is sloping down. We have a, a small cul-de-sac road. It's, it's coming out on more the high side of the site, and it wraps down into the lower side of the site. As part of the application, we, we are proposing a landscape buffer. Essentially, this is a conserva, or restriction to maintain a landscape buffer to both benefit our, our property and the streetscape as you're going down Maria Road. That will have a robust planting plan, and essentially, it will be basically along Maria Road. Off to the left side, you'll see we've also highlighted the floodplain line. That's the blue line. What you can see here is, is on this particular, on this side, the floodplain line is quite far away from the, the proposed lots. The, the streets will be street line, street, street tree line. Throughout, we will have hydrants, we will have ornamental lights. The lights are very colonial and more residential nature, they're not very high lights. And we will have sidewalk on one side of the cul-de-sac. Next slide. And I said, from a grading standpoint, we have the high side on, on, on the right, be the low side. So essentially, the, the lots on the low side are, tend to be more like a walkout basement on those side. And then you're more of a cut slope on the upper side. Each, each, as I said, each, each cul-de-sac essentially functions completely on its own. This side, we do have a stormwater basin that's located at the far left, the lower left of this plan. Next slide. So the remaining of the twenty-five lots are located on the west side of the property. We have a cul-de-sac, we have a, basically a teed-up intersection with Tall Timbers in that location. So they will be directly opposite to Tall Timbers. There's a small leg of the road, and at that point, you'll break off into two small cul-de-sacs where, where the houses are located. Similar approach here, tree-lined streets, ornamental, more colonial-looking light fixtures. And then we have sidewalk on, on one side of the street. And this particular thing, we also, we continue to have that landscape buffer that's located along Maria Road. On this particular site, it also wraps around along our, our western border. As you can see, we have open space to the north. And then to the right, you'll see in the light blue area is where the floodplain. And we'll get, we'll explain this a little bit more as we present later on. But the light blue line represent, represents the floodplain. There is no floodplain line, there's no floodplain that's located on any of the individual lots. It falls primarily in the open space and then a small portion of the detention basin. Next slide. So opposite to the, the other side, on this particular side, we have, the highest topography is on our left side, and it all slopes, slopes down to, to the right side. And that's just the natural topography, and we've designed the roadway network and the grading to, to mimic that. All those, all the grades on the roads in these two cul-de-sacs are very gentle. This, this cul-de-sac generally is about one percent grades on all the roads. So we're really pretty minimal. On the other cul-de-sac, I think we have a small stretch of about five percent, but ultimately, the roads there are, are pretty, pretty flat also. Once again, on the right-hand side, the lots that are kind of at the far side, those tend to be walkouts, working with the topography as opposed to the other side, which has a more of a cut slope. Once again, this project, this side functions on its own, has its own water and sewer, has its own roadway network. And then up in the upper right corner, it has its own stormwater basin. So while it's part of one application, the two sides do, are very independent of each other. Next slide. So we do have resources nearby that we have to, we had to design around. First was the FEMA one hundred year floodplain. As you know, the Scott Swamp watershed is fairly significant. On the right-hand side is the FEMA map. And as you can see, it's very wide as it comes down through Scott Swamp. And then after Maria Road, there's culverts under Maria Road. And after that, it gets more of a, to be a more of a narrow floodplain. But we, 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 as I indicated before, no lots have any flood zone located on the lots. Only a small portion of the detention basin has, has some floodplain. So at the lower right-hand corner, where you see those little, little labels and little tick marks, that's essentially is a cut and fill analysis, just to show the town that in fact, that we are providing a net positive. So what we have to do there is we do a cut and fill analysis to say, how much fill are we doing in the floodplain, and how much cut are we doing in the floodplain? And it's our obligation to show that we're having a net positive in, in flood storage. But we have designed the grading, so we do have a net positive, a small amount, but we, we do have a net increase in flood storage. But after that, working with town staff, this is a graphical representation. So FEMA line, it's the line you're seeing on that plan, is essentially the same line you're seeing on the FEMA map above. But working with town staff, they asked us to do some verification in the field to find out, in fact, to take a look at that, the elevation wise out there. So next slide. So what we had was, the surveyors went out there, and they did a field check in this area, the detention basin. And what they found out was actually, the area is actually above the floodplain elevation. So under the FEMA mapping, elevation two ninety-one is the one hundred year floodplain elevation. And what you can see is all the spot grades, the ones with the cross, not the plus, are existing condition spot grades. And you can see those existing grades are two ninety-one point seven, two ninety-one point seven one, two ninety-one, two ninety-two. And it's not uncommon that the FEMA line and topography are slightly different. That's actually very common. But in this particular situation though, even though we did analysis with the graphical line, this is showing that the floodplain itself is actually not located in the floodplain. And actually, the basin is above the two ninety elevation. So we look at it both ways. We have an obligation to look at it from the blue line, which is the graphical line. But the red line is where the two ninety-one elevation falls. So I think we've done our, our strong due diligence there to look at the, the floodplain in both directions. Next slide. We also, we took a look at the, we had to do a full hydraulic analysis. And included in your package is a full engineering report for the project. Scott Swamp watershed is, is fairly significant. It's about five hundred and thirty-seven acres by the time it gets to Maria Road. Just as a, a point of context, we, we are developing about seventeen acres of land. So we're only about three point two acres of the total watershed of, the total Scott Swamp to Maria Road. But the open space we're proposing is resulting in about thirteen acres of that watershed. So it's an important seventy-one acres of open space that we're proposing. The two stormwater basins were designed for the two-year through the hundred-year storm event using the new NOAA rainfall data. So that's, that's rainfall data that you're able to, not using the old DOT, that's, that's kind of outdated. The new NOAA thing, you can actually put a pinpoint right on your site, and it'll give you the rainfall data for your specific site. So it's not only specific, but it's current. The drainage system has been designed to meet all town road, town subdivision standards. Our analysis showed that there's no increase in peak runoff rate for any of the storm events. Down below is the chart that you can find in Stormwater Report. We're actually showing that there's a slight decrease in runoff from our development to, to the watershed. Ultimately, the flood, most of the stormwater in the Maria Road, sorry, the Scott Swamp watershed is controlled by the culverts underneath Maria Road. And I just want to be clear on the record that we are not making any modifications to those town-owned culverts under Maria Road. Those will remain as, as we're staying very far away from those. Next slide. We want to give you a little understanding of the type of architecture that's going to be built here. Frankly, we'll show you the next slide, it's actually a project in town. So the carriers have developed this type of architecture, has a lot of interest, colonial nature, and even, it's very compact, and that's why it works well on these cluster subdivision. As you can see, the garage is somewhat tucked underneath the building with living space above. So they get a very efficient footprint on, on a small, on a small footprint. So very effective, as opposed to traditionally, you would see a garage kind of tucked over to the side. They actually tuck it under the building and get good living space. And these, this architecture is very well designed for cluster subdivision. Next slide. This is a project that this commission should be familiar if you've been, it's kind of on the backside of Unionville. It's called Langens Quarters, and it was built also under this cluster subdivision and approved by this commission. And frankly, you can see the architecture I just presented to you in the far distance. The buildings have, each building has, has a lot of interest to it. And what you can see here is this development also had a lot of open space. You can see the type of amenities and the small landscape details that do present themselves in it. And it comes out to be a very attractive development. Next slide. And then more recently, we worked with the carriers on a cluster subdivision in Cromwell. Cromwell has a similar regulation to what you have. Essentially, it's a, it's a zoning code that allows you to reduce the zoning code and result in significant open space. And that's what we happen here. This was a, basically, an old tree nursery on here. But you can see, this is, project is under construction. And once again, this is the type of architecture you're, you're probably going to see out there. Very modern, high-class. And actually, you can see on the picture over the left, that's the light fixture. Essentially, it's a residential quality light fixture. It's not essentially attempting to fully light the roads, it's more of a guide light. And that's a custom-made design that the carriers came up with. But this is the type of architecture, and in similar, a very significant amount of open space was, was also dedicated as part of this, this project. So once again, I think the carrier, once they have developed a, a, a design style that works very well for the cluster, fits very nicely into small lots. Next slide. So why cluster on this? So next slide. So as I said, the first thing we have to do is take a look at what, what the subdivision would look like as a conventional subdivision. And really, ultimately, at the far north, there is a large upland area that is available for, for development. And you can see, we've come off an existing cul-de-sac to propose lots there. And then down on the other two areas, we have additional lots as, as there. So this, this is showing twenty-five lots. One of the things, one of the things that we think the cluster reason worked well here is, currently, the subdivision up on the lot, on the top left, would come through Bristol, which we'd have to work with buses and then fire and other deliveries. Where all coming through one town is, is more, more, more attractive to town services and then also us. And also, the subdivision down below resulted in about five single-family homes that were going to have driveway access directly onto Maria Road, where the cluster benefit is able to consolidate those into just two curb cuts on Maria Road. Next slide. So your zoning code lays out some guidance, as, as Chris indicated. Section nineteen of your, of your regulations outlines the cluster subdivision. And one of the things they talk about is about flexibility and, and preservation and protection of open space and other valuable natural, natural and man-made resources. And really, you go on your calculations to say, these are the things we're looking for to be protected as part of a cluster subdivision. And frankly, we think we check all boxes on that. So you're looking to protect inland wetlands, we're doing that. We're looking to land containing permanently preserved open space, we're doing that. Land containing critical and habitat, as per the natural diversity database, we're doing that. And a land located in the A-zone on FEMA. So the, all the open space we're, we're proposing, seventy-one acres we're proposing, include that. But they also include large open upland area that I pointed up on the cul-de-sac off of Bristol. Next slide. So in terms of connecting open space, the town of Farmington has frankly, already has put together some large tracts of open space, and this is kind of the middle of the donut that, that was missing. So on the left-hand side is your town GIS once again. Dark green is representing dedicated open space. I think light green is representing more of a, more of a conservation restriction. So directly to our north is town-owned open space. Directly to our south is open space that was dedicated part of Coke Farms and Tall Timbers. And then below that is, I believe, Westwood's Golf Course. So as you can see, this is going to be a very important linkage. So it's not just providing open space, but providing open space corridors, linking these two other open spaces. On the right-hand side, all the green area is, is dead, is going to be dedicated open space. The blue is the lot area, and then there's more of a darker green color. Those are two areas that are going to be owned by the homeowners association. Those are the areas that are being occupied by the stormwater basins. Next slide. Once again, one of the other objectives you had with the cluster subdivision is preserving wetlands, and we're doing that. This is, on the left-hand side, is town GIS associated with the wetlands. And you can see how that corridor of open space lines up well with the open space we're proposing. Next slide. Maintaining floodplains. So once again, we have a floodplain that's running down through Scott Swamp, mimicking very much the wetland corridor. And we're ma, we're maintaining that and protecting that with open space on also. Next slide. And I, I don't think we're the only ones that are saying that this open space and this approach of cluster is, is the right way to go. As part of the wetlands application, there was a endangered species hit, and what they call is NDDB hit that was located in the Scott Swamp, which you wouldn't be surprised due to the quality of that swamp. And we got a letter back from the DEP, which basically came back and said that the placement, and to quote in here, it says, "The placement of, the placement of the development confining to thirteen point five acres of the forty-five, they were not actually even looking at the additional open space. And including specialized stormwater will help minimize the sensitive habitats for the species. Additionally, we concur with the proposed species, species protection measures." And above that, it says, "We concur with your plan to set aside forty-two acres," actually, we're setting aside seventy-one acres, "donated to the Town of Farming, open space to benefit these species." So they clearly, even DEP thought the cluster subdivision was the way to go in the protection of open space. We did receive inland wetlands approval, as Chris indicated. We believe, we've received letters from the CROG and NBCOG, letters stating no conflict. We received letter, clean letters from both NDDB, which is on the left-hand side. And actually, as part of our stormwater general permit, we had to have And actually, as part of our stormwater general permit, we had to have a archaeological review of it. And also, we got a clean letter on that. So essentially, we got clean letters on NDB in Chippewa, to the point where we actually have already received our stormwater general permit. On that. So once again, I think the cluster subdivision is is speaking volumes to the other other people that are reviewing this project. Next slide. So in conclusion, the benefits of this cluster subdivision is really preservation of seventy one acres of open space. It's really not just open space, but it's linking this north and south work that you this commission has done previously. To set aside and other commissions to set aside open space, and now we're creating this large linkage on a Scott Swamp. It protects natural resources, critical habitats and wetlands. It's a it strikes a strong balance, and I think that's why the Wetlands Commission approved it. It strikes a strong balance between lot sizes and natural resources. And it does also, from a zoning standpoint, it mimics the the development tool that was used for the subdivision to the south. Which is also a cluster subdivision, so it it meets the character of the neighborhood in that sense. Next slide. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily Foster from my office to walk you through the traffic analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, for the record. I'm Emily Foster. I'm a traffic engineer with SLR Consulting. So for the traffic letter, the existing information, including site environment, traffic volumes and crash data was collected. We collected the latest three years of crash data from the Connecticut Crash Data Repository. And found that within the last three years, only one crash was reported on Maria Road near both of the cluster sites. And we also conducted twenty four hour weekday hourly counts of Maria Road. And at both of the proposed driveway locations. And these were used as the existing volumes in the analysis. And then we visited the site on Monday, February sixth, in the morning to evaluate the site distances at the two proposed driveways. And observe the operations at the intersections of Maria Road and Plainville Avenue. Next slide, please, Shannon. So the new trips generated by the proposed twenty five single family homes were estimated. Using ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is an industry standard resource. Using the statistical data published in this manual, it is estimated that the total development, so both clusters. Will only generate approximately eighteen new trips during the morning peak hour. And twenty four new trips during the afternoon peak hour. And those will be separated into inbound and outbound trips. Next slide, please. So we added the estimated site generated trips to the existing volumes. And analyzed the future intersection operations at the two proposed driveway intersections. Intersection operations, the results are expressed as a level of service, which is essentially grade for the movements. And then the intersection as a whole, level of service A represents good operation, level of service F represents poor operations. So as you can see in the table, it's expected that both of the proposed driveway intersections will operate. At a good level of service during both of the peak hours, so the morning and afternoon commute times. And then based on comments we received from town staff, we we know that cluster two driveway. Intersection one here will be opposite Tall Timbers Avenue, creating a two way stop controlled intersection, so four legs. With Tall Timbers and the cluster two driveway stop controls. So using ITE, again, we estimated the number of peak hour trips generated by Tall Timbers Avenue. And we reevaluated the intersection, and it was found that it'll still operate at good level of service. Level of service to your better during both of the commute peak hours. Next slide, please. I also just want to point out that we understand that there are some concerns about the traffic operations at the intersection of Maria Road and Plainville Avenue. Specifically during the morning peak hour. The proposed development, like I said before, is only estimated to generate eighteen trips in the morning. But only fourteen outbound trips during the morning peak hour, so that equates to roughly. Less than four cars every fifteen minutes. So given the small amount of new traffic, the traffic operations at the intersection are not expected to be exacerbated by. The additional traffic from the proposed development. And then finally, we evaluated the intersection site distance at both of the proposed driveways. And intersection site distance is determined through the creation of clear sight triangles. And the cluster two or the western cluster is shown here. And the triangles are in blue, and these triangles should be clear of any permanent obstructions. To provide the proper site distance. So at this driveway, that's opposite Tall Timbers Drive. With the ground cover cleared along the southern edge of Maria Road, which is shown in orange there. There will be adequate site distance, looking both left and right from the proposed driveway location. Based on the eighty fifth percentile speeds that were collected in January with the volumes. And based on CT DOT guidelines. And the next slide, please. And then at the easterly cluster, the with some slight regrading of the shoulder on the northern edge of Maria Road, shown in red there. There will be adequate site distance, again, looking left and right from the proposed driveway location. Based on the eighty fifth percentile speeds collected in January and DOT guidelines. So that's it for traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily and Tom. Madam Chair, we recognize that this matter will be continued to the twenty seventh in a hybrid. Application wherein it will be live at Town Hall and also available by Zoom. I'm I'm curious if this might be a good jumping off point for commission members to start inquiring. Of Mr. Daly and Ms. Foster. And that will might allow a little time for neighbors that may have appeared tonight that want to hear. Because I'm just looking at the clock thinking it's almost nine forty. And at least we can get the commission going and then perhaps some get some neighbors in to start that. It's just a suggestion. I have more. At some point, we'll discuss the Article Four, Section Twelve special permit. And its applicability and the reasons why we think it supports and sustains the application. But I leave it to you. I I think we're ready to start taking some questions from the commission, if you think that's prudent.
Yes, thank you for the suggestion, and I do, and you are correct, Attorney Hoab. We will continue with this application. And I also think it's important that we talk about the correspondence, which I know Shannon is going to help us with. Because we did receive an awful lot. All right, so let's do turn this over to the commissioners to get some of the initial questions. Mr. Grabulis, questions, comments?
As in one of our previous subdivisions, we talked a lot about runoff and and affected adjoining neighborhoods. I know we. We addressed some things with the Snowberry subdivision. Last year or the year before. Can you just speak a little to any. Concerns that the neighbors have regarding runoff and if town staff could. Maybe just address whether or not they think they're adequate measures being taken.
Do you want to hear from the applicant first on the measures and then town staff's comment?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, Shannon. Thank you.
Mr. Daly, if you'd like to speak first.
Sure, and once again, Tom Daly for the record. We understand the neighbor concerns. We we did hear them at the inland wetlands commission meeting. First of all, in regards to Snowberry Cobble, they're actually elevated above us topographically. Not only they above us in in the watershed, they're actually up above the grade to us also. So there is no ability for our stormwater to have any impact on on them. All our water from our site drains to towards the wetlands. There's no drainage from this property that is sheet flowing or draining to other properties that are adjacent. It's all draining towards the middle. We've captured all our stormwater into the stormwater basins that are designed to. Per per industry standards and the town regulations. We modeled those for the two through the hundred year storm event. And and then we showed that we have no increase in peak runoff rate to those. And what's one of the also one of the benefits of a cluster subdivision, our overall footprint is just smaller. So in terms of that, we've we've mitigated and and met all the town standards in terms of the drainage system. Flowing down gradient of of the property.
Good, thank you.
One second, Mike.
So it might for part two, and Mr. Sears here as well, he can jump in. That has reviewed this, the drainage in detail. The stormwater analysis as well as the the plans and supporting documents. We concur with the statement that the runoffs match peak flow or even less than peak flow. And we have, as part of staff comments, requested further investigation into. Some infiltration opportunities where possible with. With roofs and some of the stormwater runoff to help reduce the volume of water that will be leaving the site. And they did in increase the size of the detention basins. So the detention basins. Are loosely sized for the five hundred year storm, so similar to what we've done in other developments where we've. Because there are foundation drains that will drain into the system. We're requested that the additional capacity be provided, and that was done so in the detention basins. Do you have anything else to add?
Agreed with all that.
Mike, okay.
Thank you.
Mike, back to you.
No, thank you for that. For right now, I'll have more questions after, but I'll pass it to my other commissioners.
Thank you. Scott, you're next.
Yeah, Mike asked the exact same question I was thinking of, so I I think I'm okay for right now. I'm sure I'll have more questions as we go along.
Sounds good.
And I would say is we're not proposing any exotic drainage systems here. This is the the same things that this commission has done. They're tried and true and prudent. The stormwater basins are 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 well established. And as as Shannon said, we actually worked with town staff, we made some modifications. We actually raised and increased the size of the basins to provide some additional storage. And actually did run the model for the five hundred year storm that can be contained. Traditionally, we don't look at the five hundred year storm, that's somewhat of an outlier. But we did run the model for the five hundred year, and they are contained in the in the detention bases. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Just quick, since we're talking about water. I I've read through that some of the homes may have been below groundwater and would need a sump pump. Has that changed over the course of this presentation? Which and if you could just point out which lots were those that may or may not have been corrected that don't need a sump pump?
Once again, for the Tom Daly, yes, so early on, there was some, so once you grab, you know, once you look. Once you estimate, we worked with the carriers, we figured out what the bottom of the basin was, and then you have to carry that drainage out. And there was our first iteration, and I don't recall the number, but it may have, you know, been a half dozen lots that would would have required a sump pump. Working with town staff and really for both drainage and then sump pump. We went back to the drawing board and we actually raised up the cul-de-sacs a little bit. And lowered the drainage, so we have now designed a system that no buildings require sump pumps. Town staff felt that that was and 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 right, it was appropriate. Town staff said, why rely on some pump? See if we can make some small modifications to the plans to see if we can get everything out by gravity. So while that was an earlier comment, the revised plans, none of the lots will be required to have a sump pump.
Okay, and then my last sort of initial question on traffic. So the entrance across from Tall Timbers, thinking about those who live on Tall Timbers. So why not put the entrance so it's not across? Is it more safe this way? Would it be more safe if it was not directly across from Tall Timbers? Maybe you can just walk through the design of that.
I'll let Emily speak after me, but traditionally, good engineering is either you tee up or you keep it farther away, right? You don't want them so close, and your regulations probably even even say. Maybe a two hundred foot separation. You typically don't want two cars conflicting, you know, one coming out one way and going the other way. So on the right hand side, where Coke Farms was, this is generally laid out, so we're I think we're almost five hundred feet away. So we have a very large distance there. On the other side, between wetlands and topographically trying to come in at the rate grade. And 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 just laying it out. Are we we believe it was actually more appropriate to be teed up directly. As opposed to being closer where you started having those conflicts. And Emily, I'd like to hear your your thoughts on that, too.
Sure, yeah, so. To have to have the driveway right across from Tall Timbers rather than somewhere on either side of it is is safer. It's a safer location. Because if you picture it, say, it was moved a little bit further to the east. Then you would have people coming out of Tall Timbers just starting to accelerate. As someone coming out of the driveway is trying to navigate and turning. So so directly across is is the safest for that location.
Got it, and Shannon, if you don't mind confirming, is so it's a regulation, they're supposed to be two hundred feet apart. I I just couldn't follow that.
I don't know that I've got that at my fingertips.
And I might have, it's a it's a typical standard to at least get them two hundred feet apart.
So the the correct, so ideally, right, so and you've had it even. San Farmington Avenue, right, and there's different commercial driveways, right? It's a lot easier when the commercial driveway is right opposite you. You can see the state, assuming the driver opposite you is using a turn signal. It makes it really easy to know if they're turning right or left. You know, if you're if they're turning right and you're turning left, like who has the right of way? If they're right directly opposite you, you can see those turn signals. And clearly understand who has the right of way as you enter into the main flow of traffic. If you start to be offset by only fifty or a hundred feet. You can't, you can see the vehicle, and you know somebody's going to enter into the travelway. But you can't really see if they're turning right or left as clearly as if you would they are directly opposite you. But they're close enough that if they turn, if you happen to turn at the same time. There is the potential for conflicting traffic movements and unfortunately, a possible head on collision. Although not frequent. If you're farther away at five hundred feet as the other, where Coke Farms and and the eastern development is. It's far enough away to allow separate turn movements, and it's they're not dependent on one another, right? So you can, like I said, Farmington Avenue or any other. Business commercial area where you've got multiple driveways and you're trying to enter into traffic flow. That's probably the best analogy for you for that. Was that helpful?
It makes sense. Is there one, I don't know, this requirement, more safe than not, is the five hundred feet? Where the Coke Farms is more safe than the one at Tall Timbers?
No, those are equal, I would say, equal from engineering practice. Time it starts to get questionable is when you start to get these intersections less than a hundred feet away. Because you have that opportunity for conflicting movements.
Got it. Thank you. No additional questions for tonight. Thank you.
Matt, Matt, if you don't mind me to jump in, the the regulation does does require streets to be to be separated no more than are no, no, no. Less than a hundred and fifty feet.
So one fifty is our standard. So Tom said two hundred, I was saying one hundred, the standard, standard's one fifty in our ranks. It's in the subdivision ranks?
Yes.
Okay, we can't hear it.
So you got to put your mic back on, Matt, sorry.
Sorry, so how do I think about Tall Timbers, it's zero feet?
Right, because you're directly across, so that's fine. So if you're if you're going to be offset, it has to be at least that you so you either have to be dead across. Or you have to be greater than a hundred and fifty feet.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matt. Good questions. Liz?
I think at this point, I'm good, no question.
Okay, James?
I don't have anything additional than what what's already been asked.
All right, and Mike?
The question, I guess, is for for Tom, if not maybe Chris, but what's going to go on with regard to maintenance of.
what's going to go on with regard to maintenance of the private road, the catch basins, all that, it's all going to be encompassed under the HOA and that'll be taken care of?
Yeah, I'll let Chris speak a little too, but it it's pretty standard. So the HOA will will will, yes, we'll have to maintain the roads. As I said, we're building them to town road standards, so we expect them to be robust. The HOA will also be responsibility for maintaining the stormwater basin. There's a stormwater maintenance manual that's on the plan. Many times, these elements are brought into actually the homeowners association documents, so when you purchase your lot, you know what your your requirements are. The other restriction is that that conservation easement that's located or the landscape buffer easement that is located along Morea Road, that will also be under their control. So they will, but Chris, from a from a legal standpoint, that's all what rolled up into the homeowners' documents. You're on mute, sorry, Chris.
It would be in the public offering statement as well as the declaration. And so they would, it would run with the land, all those obligations would run and continue on in perpetuity.
Okay, and Shannon, you guys are good with the maintenance plan when that will be submitted to the town? Maybe it's a question for Bruce, but.
No, agree, agree. They, we went through that whole plan. It details when the catch basins are to be cleaned, how often sweeping, detention basin maintenance, and as part of our MS4 requirement, we we actually require everyone to get these reports to us at the all for the previous year, to get them to us by the January 31st of the preceding year.
Okay, and then Shannon, once these roads are private, they will always stay private, they would never become the town's responsibility?
Correct. Typically, because there's easements, they end up with utility easements and different things through them, so correct. We have had residents ask on varying, I I don't know that I want to say never. But typically, no, they, once they're they're approved as private, either because of geometry or easements or other elements with respect to the road that's permitted for a private road that we don't permit for a public road, so they would not be switched over to public.
Okay, no further questions for tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, all commissioners. Good questions, for sure. I was looking at this parcel and, you know, reading all the documentation from the applicant. I think I got through most of the correspondence, if not all. I know some of it was received pretty late prior to this meeting, but what I see is that this 8517 Morea and 8518, both parcels have been on the market or went on the market in July of 2020 and on the contract in October 2020, so they were for sale on the open market. I know there are some concerns about something else, which I don't know what the resident was referring to, but so these parcels are were available for purchase by anyone. Uh, thank you for doing the cluster subdivision and limiting more impact to the landscape, right? Once you change that, you cannot go back. The traffic study was kind of crazy. I cannot believe how fast we travel on that road. Hopefully, I was not in any of the pictures, but that that was very surprising to me. I did, uh, there was, there was an email that we received, Shannon, like, was it a resident that did their own timing?
Yes.
All right, so I guess after, maybe we'll go through that, or is it?
If you have a question on it, I get or.
How do we verify? I mean, the point about time of month and day, right? That makes sense.
Correct, so Emily can certainly and I I think they noted that they they did the actual hard counts on one day, but they were in the field on a different day. I've been out there, others of town staff have been out there. So I can comment on my observations and whomever the resident that submitted can can comment if they so choose at the time, and then we can ask them questions directly if they happen to call in.
Okay, sure. Emily, do you have a comment or have you, did you receive that email or did you see the email?
I did forward it to them. I don't know if it made it to her.
Yes, I did see it. Um, so, yeah, um, we we were constrained in when we took the counts just based on submitting, but we, I can run the analysis with their counts and and show how it changes. Um, if that's something that that we think is beneficial.
Right, you probably would, right? Anyway, to validate.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 development itself is going to generate the same amount of traffic and it's very minimal. Um, but we can run run it with with greater through traffic to to show that it still will operate okay.
Okay, that that would be great, because there was definitely quite a difference, but I understand your point about the traffic generated by by the subdivision. I saw a comment about a fire truck, some the fire, there's a concern with fire truck not being able to turn is I'm sure that's being considered or was considered. It has to be considered.
Mr. Daley, you want to add to hit that one?
We, I have not received any comments from the fire department, but we did. To be honest, we actually made our cul-de-sacs bigger than than we initially thought to do that. And we reviewed that with the town staff. We can, we can take a look at that, but I believe our cul-de-sac. But we can provide information on that.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, so this again, development, right, this parcel, the family selling it. The carrier for family, you know, is proposing the subdivision, I'm, and I don't know if anyone is on the line, but did we look at affordable housing? Did we look at any type of anything else here? Just wondering, you know, there's there are a lot of buildings that are coming in, there are some smaller subdivisions also coming in, being built by carrier. Times are changing. I'm just wondering if something else was looked at too, just curious.
I, am I on? Good, I'm not muted. I I think if you give us the opportunity, we have the next hearing, I can talk to the applicant about what other permutations were considered and specifically as it relates to affordable housing here, and I will have a response for you at the next next hearing.
In in terms of the engineering, in the context of the zone, your cluster subdivision has been a successful development tool or an option for the carriers and other parcels and land. And clearly, looking at the the how the land to the south was developed, that the cluster subdivision came came up to the top of the pile very, very quickly. And I think the homeowners were also, the sellers, I'm sorry, were also interested in in developing as as residential. And we went through several permutations in terms of the overall layout, but in terms of of other zoning or architectural design or other, you know, I guess potentially multifamily options that were in the code. We didn't look at that. It was, it was, it was, it's always been the cluster subdivision that we've been focused on.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's all I have for right now. And Shannon, correspondence, how do we want to run through that correspondence?
Uh, I've got it scanned in as a PDF together, so folks, you're gonna have to bear with me, but I do want to get it entered into the record. So that I granted, it's been shared, so any correspondence that we received, I want to say up till four o'clock ish this afternoon was assimilated and added into our website so that it could be shared with the commission members and shared with the applicant and anyone else, quite honestly, from that standpoint, so. But we do have, we do have a little bit, so. Let's see. We have, and most of these are emails. I don't believe I have, I've got a handful of letters, but most are emails. So this is an email from Arlene Klein, the March 4th, with questions, she's providing articles to TPZ and links. Uh, so that would have been provided and posted online. Andrea Casaria with a note, they're at 78 Coke Farm and unable to attend, and a note that they're opposing the application. And again, we're, this is all being recorded, so all these documents are now part of the record and part of the recording of the meeting. Uh, this one is incredibly small. Uh, this one is from Lisa Troy expressing opposition to the development. And again, these are all posted online too, so I'm not going to read them in verbatim. They are part of the record. They are part of the legal record of the meeting. And they have been shared with the commission and the applicant. Ms. Troy also included some FEMA mapping as part of her documentation. And there was, she actually had the actual FEMA map that won't let me assimilate it or the landmark. I'll show that later. It won't let me add it into this PDF. There's a restriction from FEMA. Uh, we received a letter from Quavik River Watershed Association documenting concerns. And I have to read through it all again to know if it was in opposition, but there's documented concerns within the letter. Again, posted online and shared here for the record. An email from Arlene Klein with another article to be shared with the commission. I have an email from Kay Higgins from March 7th expressed concerns over the construction of homes on Morea Road documenting her concerns environmental and traffic. Ed Gilardi email from March 8th documenting his opposition to the project and citing a number of reasons. Barbara Javara from March 9th will leave an opposition and email received in opposition. And Gabri filed an email with us regarding the the appeal and his attorney have already noted, the case is not dismissed, the judgment of non-suit was filed to close out that appeal. Stacy Frecher, email exchange, and this will be separate. We've received three petitions with a number of signatures, so I'll open those up separately towards the end. This is just an email from Miss Frecher confirming her intent to include a petition that has been filed with the Wetlands Commission to add that to the TPZ record as well. A letter from the Farmington River Watershed Association, again, providing comments and concerns regarding the the development. Bonnie West, opposition to the application and a request that the town or land trust purchase the property. Carolyn Peter Bernier opposed and again suggesting another agency purchase the land. This is the documentation, the traffic documentation from submitted from Mr. Gilardi. And documents with respect to traffic counts and submitted for the record. Joan Packer opposed to the development and suggestions on other agencies for purchase. Lilian and Frederick Barufi opposed to the development and suggestion on other agencies for purchase.
Yeah. It's okay. I'm still happy you're driving.
Patrick Bull opposed to the development and other agency for purchase. Robert Cleefel opposed to the development and again suggesting the town or other agency purchase the land instead. Tricia Trish Thompson opposed and another agency purchased the land. And Arlene Klein submitted picture of Holly Lane from Farmington for the record. Carla Gregory opposed and suggestion on another agency to purchase the land. Carol Noble had issued two engineering reviews to Bruce Sear and myself. The latest of which was this afternoon. And then there had been one on February 24th, the emails are linked together and shared here. Jerry Ferraro in opposition to the development and citing concerns with flooding and also suggestion on other agency to purchase the land. Jan Carpenter opposition to the development and concern from environmental standpoint. Nicole Wall is in opposes, opposition to the development and suggestion of other agency to purchase the land. Stacy Frecher provided information about application materials and discussion on wetlands and the lawsuit. And her email has been part of the record. And there's some dialogue between herself and I believe it's Ms. Noble. Follow-up email from Stacy Frecher commenting on testimony made during the wetlands hearing by environmental scientists. This is made part of the record. And she submitted into the record the wetlands application, cluster development information and copies of some of the mapping. That's it for that parts. Well, so bear with me, I've got just a handful of other. There is a neighborhood petition that was signed. These are I believe this is the original one that had been signed by the at the time for the wetlands appeal or the wetlands permitting. So again, this is all entered into the record. These are all posted online, et cetera. And then there were two received. Today. One was an online petition. So many of the addresses appear to be far away and the town staff is not verified addresses uh on any of these. But according to just self evident here, it does seem that some of them are out of state. Or perhaps not in close proximity to um Farmington. So.
Notice that too. Yeah.
Entered into the record. More. So this is another hand one just entered into the record today. And. I'm going to. Note for the record, let's see here, I can grab this quickly. There's uh Steve Trinkus has. So Steve Trinkus also submitted a letter on behalf of some of the residents of the group say Maria Road. So this letter was entered into the record as well as well as um Mr. Trinkus's resume and that's been shared. Online and with the commission and the applicant as well. I believe. That takes care of everything that uh I have received today.
Mm hmm.
Obviously, if um. Somebody. Feels different or feels I've missed something or missed an uh an email, then they can, they know how to reach me.
That's right. Thank you.
So, but I believe that takes care of all of the online uh correspondence that we've received so far.
Thank you. Uh, before we turn it to the public uh to get some of the comments going, um Attorney Hoheb, what was the criteria for? Who was invited to the informational meeting that happened in February? Do you know?
Do I know who attended?
Or who wasn't invited? Cause the.
Oh, anyone within, I, I, I hope I specified that in the opening, but I may not have. Anyone within the notice zone, so two hundred feet from the uh from the property. We just used the certification list from the, the map uh express map.
You don't have happen to know like an approximate number of residents?
Oh, well, twelve uh we, I think the approximate number was twelve residents appeared.
Right, but what is the? The, the invitee, the two hundred.
Oh, uh, I have to go through my service list. It's, it's a lot of people, but I can, I can give you the number of people that were notified by the applicant. He took care of that directly. I was not present and I did not participate in the notice. But I will follow up and get you an answer. How many people received that notice?
It, it's striking to me how much correspondence we received and how recent it is, right? Uh, thinking back to, I think you mentioned February twenty third was the informational meeting. So I'm just trying to see, is there disconnect or maybe people were busy? I don't know.
I don't have an answer for that, but I, I do have an answer for telling you how many people were sent mail. And I presume it looks to me like there's an organization or a group. That, that they could communicate amongst themselves. I believe there's a Facebook presence. So if there was anyone that didn't get a notice, you, you would expect that they would have been contacted, but. Let me say this, the applicant is still willing. If anybody has questions directly. The applicant is willing to talk to them and discuss it. So the invitation is still open.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, um. Dear Shannon. You're on, you're on.
Ten fifteen, um, so we are, we'll open it up to public comment. Please use the feature in Zoom to raise your hand and you will be called upon to direct your comments to the commission. There will not be a back and forth as there typically is not with public comments. Uh, you make your comments. If, if there's a small clarification question, then we typically will address that immediately. But uh, in general, comments are received. And then the applicant has afforded the opportunity to respond in totality once public comment has been received. Uh, so raise your hand way and and go ahead and uh rage at any point. We will take them in order. As they're coming through on my Zoom screen. And we can uh address comments uh as they come through. So the uh first one with a, and everyone, you will be required to provide your name and your street address. Uh, for the record, please, so that we can have an accurate recording of public comment received. So. Uh, what's showing up on the email of the screen is Darth Vader one X. So if you could. Uh, provide your name and address for the record and then provide your comments for the commission.
Yes, uh, my name is Eric Roy. I am located at one seven six Plank Hill Road in Bristol. Basically, one of the last houses on the Bristol Farmington line. Um, the question I have um concerning the water and the flooding. Um, I don't know if anybody has done any surveillance of Plank Hill Road in Bristol uh concerning this project. Um, we do have a. Water basin, I guess you would call it, or a uh street water basin in our backyard. Um, that is shared between us and the neighbors uh on the side of us. Um. Any given time, uh, any season. Um, you will see when it rains, even little rain that we had this evening. Our backwoods has become a swamp and our um. Back lawn is also a swamp. We cannot dig any more than a foot without hitting water. Um, so my concern is that the analysis of the floodwater. That is uh had, that has been done um is inaccurate. Um, I don't think that they've taken into consideration that you cannot. You cannot displace water. You could only distribute it. So when um they are talking about adding property onto the land of the flooding, that water has to go somewhere. Um, Maria Road has been shut down several times because of flooding. Um. The Cope Farms um area, I am a, I have to say, I am a business owner as well in Farmington. And I have a lot of clientele in the Cope Farms area. Um, and a lot of them have flooding issues. Old Pond Road, Hope Farms Road, all of them have flooding issues. Um. So I was wondering if anybody could explain to me about that, about how um. They've come to this flood. Conclusion, um, and we've been living in the house for eleven years now, and I've noticed a drastic change in the. Topography of the backwoods in our area. Uh, trees have now toppled over because roots have become um too flooded and, and um. I can, I'm concerned about the new project going in and that being done as well um about trees being toppled over. Uh. Flooding and all of that stuff, well.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, I said that the applicant will address for logging a while. The applicant will address these towards uh the end. It'll probably be at the next meeting on the twenty seventh.
Okay, I also had other questions um or comments as well.
Go ahead, get it all.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much. Um, and I do also travel on um. Maria Road on a daily basis, and I can tell you that the traffic also is um, is a concern. Um, it doesn't seem to be that um the counter traffic is accurate again. Um, there are certain times that I could leave my house and I will um. Be waiting two, three. Lights on Maria Road um to turn on to Plainville Avenue. Um. Uh, there's that many cars. Um, don't forget also. That it leads into Bristol, so that is a great causeway for people to come from Bristol into Farmington without having, without hitting Farmington Avenue. Um, so there are a lot more cars there than I think that were uh were counted. Um. Being that Maria Road is right. But up against uh Bristol. Um, also the concern about the emergency, um, the emergency trucks. Um, to be able to turn into this uh. This proposed property. Um, that would be a tight fit for any, um, I don't exactly know the radius for a. Fire engine to turn on to those new construction roads. Um, but it, to me, it doesn't seem that Maria Road would be wide enough for a large. Fire truck to turn into that new parking, the, the new driveway. Um, or the new uh road, proposed road. For this subdivision.
Okay.
Thank.
Okay.
Thank.
Any other comments or concerns you want the commission to be aware of and the applicant to consider?
Um, yes, also um the wildlife impact. We do have um. Known uh bears that do um. Hibernate in these woods. Um, has they, have they taken to that in consideration? There is also a, a den that is um. That is pretty well known um in our area where there are two adjacent rocks that. Um, there is a large cavern underneath both of those. Um, and we do have. Mama and her three cubs that we have seen um go in and out of the woods. Uh, from that den into that neighborhood. Is that then going to be impacted? And what is the safety precautions for the people that are going to be living in these residents with the bears and the wildlife? That are going to be now displaced, but yet still trying to find a home in this uh neighborhood where they had grown. Um, and um. My also other concern that I had was when you are on Maria Road and you are going toward Plainville Avenue. There is a sign, uh, I think it's a no littering sign, a hundred and fifty dollar fine. Um, because of the said water and um on Maria Road. And the wetlands, um, have they also taken into consideration any of the? Um, any of the littering or any of the contamination of that water from now lawns that are going to be um. Fertilized and land that is going to be um, then that is going to be um uprooted and fertilized and lawns that are going to be treated. And just basically the um. Overall contamination of, of people living in a neighborhood. Um, I don't think that was taken into consideration at all. Uh, being that you're going to have open space in these areas, those are going to be treated with. Um. Broad, you know, broadleaf killer. Um, those are going to be treated with fertilizer. Those are going to be treated with sand, salt. For the roads that are going to be in this neighborhood. Um, the HOA is going to be taking care of that. And um, I don't know if there's any kind of um. Any kind of accountability of what are they spraying on these lawns for this wetland? Um, that is going to be impacted as well.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Roy. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I know you're right on.
No, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um. Next up, uh, Dan Gabri. And you can unmute your microphone and then uh again, name, address, please.
Hi, this is Dan Gabri. I'm at eighteen Tall Timbers Drive and uh thank you Darth Vader. Um, I have quite a few questions, so I'll go through all of them and they can be on the record and everybody can respond uh after they've reviewed. Um. When Tom was talking, he originally spoke of no houses having ex, open, opening on to Maria Road. Later, when he was looking at the map of the other option. He said that they reduced that from five to two. So maybe he could just clarify exactly. Are there no houses? It looks from the map like there are none, but. You've got to hear the words. Um, second, Emily spoke of eighteen cars coming out of eighteen houses on the west subdivision. In nineteen fifty, that was probably true, but the reality is that many houses now have two people working. And so there's probably more than one car going to work in the morning. And as Darth Vader said, when you get on Maria Road early in the morning, it backs up and you sit there through several lights to get around the corner. And that's something that's got to be worried about. Uh, Tom, you mentioned that Snowberry is above the floodline and so therefore. It's not really a problem that you have to worry about. And yet at the Wetlands Commission meeting, several people from Snowberry expressed concerns because they have flooding issues. And I think the person that was involved in the legal case against this also has flooding issues. So above the floodline may be good, but I think we really need to step back and take a look at what's really going on. Um, and with that regard, I think it's important that everybody on the commission, on the board, take a look at the email from Carol Noble and take a look at the report from Steve Trinkus. Because those speak very clearly to the reality of what we're looking at here. Um, somewhat Darth Vader just mentioned that these uh emergency vehicles might have a hard time turning. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, we can get us, we can get a fire truck, we can get school buses on to more, on to uh Tall Timbers. But looking at this map, I would like to make sure the school buses can turn around. And as you think about traffic patterns, think about school buses too, because you're adding a lot of kids going to schools. And so that starts to add to the backup. Um, Tom, you spoke very much about the seventy one acres that are being free for all of the current environment and the ecosystem. But you don't talk about the amount that's not free. And quite honestly, those bears that Darth Vader spoke about. They aren't sitting there saying, oh, boy, we got a bunch of new space. They're saying, hey, what happened to what we used to have? And so think about what's gone, not just what's coming. And as you think about all the wetlands here, understand that those wetlands don't flood because trees drink the water. And you're going to cut down a lot of trees. So think about what happens to those trees. And then think about the runoff that Darth Vader mentioned, because all those people have to treat their lawns and they have to make something happen. And that runoff, if that adds to the pollution or something else, that ruins an ecosystem that Farmington is famous for. The Farmington Valley is known for what it is. It's a farming farmland kind of area that people love to visit. And if you take that away. Why bother coming to Farmington? Thanks for listening, everybody.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Uh, next up, uh Ed Gilardi, if you'd like to unmute your microphone and then again, name and. Um. Address for the record, please. Mr. Gilardi, you can unmute your microphone. Mr. Gilardi, there's um, there should be an icon at the bottom of your screen that'll allow you to unmute your microphone.
Maybe we can come back.
Okay, we will try one more.
I'm here now. Sorry, I made it.
Okay, alright.
I'm the one that did the car count. And the first problem I had with. What the uh, count they did was for only one hour. There's a lot more activity. After uh eight o'clock. I counted from seven o'clock to nine o'clock. I got, even with their numbers, I got a hundred and seventy seven more cars going through the intersection. I got, even with their numbers, I got a hundred and seventy-seven more cars going through the intersection. Of the cars that came through, the nine hundred and seventy cars that came through. A hundred and thirteen cars had to wait for two lights to change before they went through the intersection of uh Maria Road and one seventy-seven. Another thing they don't make any mention of, down to page five on S L R's car report. They talk about an alternate uh route of travel from uh Maria Road. They don't identify it, but I'm pretty darn sure they're talking about Coke Farms Road. Now, we had forty-one cars within that two-hour time period, make a right-hand turn to avoid the backup. That was at the traffic light to come through Coke Farms Road. Coke Farms Road, at that time in the morning, we had people walking their dogs, we had people jogging, we had people waiting for the school buses to come through. And we don't need extra traffic. And you're gonna try and tell me that we put more cars in Maria Road, there will not be more cut-throughs? If they go ahead with this project, I would like to see them to put in speed bumps like they have on Garden Street by Mrs. Porter's. Because the cars come through too fast. And uh S L R never made a mention about the cutoffs or naming the alternate route, which had to be Coke Farms Road. The other thing that ticked me off was uh they picked January fourth as a day for the test. That was a short week. New Year's was on Sunday, everybody goes off on Monday. How many people are not there for the week? Meaning they're on vacation or not there? So I think their count was on the lower side. Also, I was a volunteer fireman and uh the town of Farmington has a ninety-six-foot ladder truck. Now, usually when you respond to a catastrophic fire, you're gonna have at least two fire engines go there. Now, I just wondered these cul-de-sacs that they've built, do they have enough room for a ninety-six-foot ladder truck and uh two full-size fire engines? To maneuver, to put out a catastrophic fire? I don't know. It just seems nobody's signed off on it. I wish, I wanna know if it's cleared by the fire department or not, but uh I'm not um available to that information. Another item. Let's take a section to. This meeting that Mr. Carrier had at the community center was an invite only by mail, is my understanding. Now, if it would have been posted or something, I would have wanted to attend it, because it's such a good project for the community. I would have, I wanted to hear about it. But uh it was a select field. And it's only two, there's not that many people are two hundred feet from the proposed project. So it's a very limited view of selection of the people who's gonna hear this uh presentation. So I I think that's being sort of decided at this point. Another thing that got me real upset. I watched the Wetland Commission go through their process on approving the uh. The Wetlands Commission's part of this project. There was no presentation that showed any kind of points to Carrier's plan. All the points were made by Carrier's experts and there was nobody to analyze the plan. To counter any of the issues that could have been said, because we weren't expert witnesses. So it was a one-sided event and uh the reason why I got so much approval by the commissioners, because. They didn't have the expertise or the knowledge of how to combat it. All I about wanted to say for now, but uh I'll be anxious to hear the future reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Did he say he's a first responder or?
Was he used to?
Oh.
Okay, uh I've got Frank Carlosi. Frank, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
You, you gave me, you gave me the option to unmute and um I think that was a mistake. Frank Carlosi should be a different ID.
Okay, I.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, I'm here.
Excellent, thank you for calling in. What's your address, sir?
Yeah, I live at Two Tall Timbers Drive. I've been at Two Tall Timbers Drive since May of nineteen eighty-seven. I'm one of the original uh homeowners uh on Tall Timbers Drive. And um I brought this up at the meeting um on February twenty-third. And several other people have also commented about the meeting on February twenty-third. Uh Mr. Carrier only invited a handful of people. He picked, cherry-picked the people to invite to that. I think for attorney Chris Hohead to speak. So eloquently about how Mr. Carrier has gone out of his way to invite people. To a meeting on February twenty-third is a little bit disingenuous and a little bit. Of a discredit to the law practice of telling the complete truth of what's going on. Let me tell you the reason why I'm calling and why I brought this up to you guys. At all the meetings that we've heard, it's been a railroad. The Wetlands Commission re- railroaded it through, they shut the conversation down. None of us had a clue what was going on and what the comments were gonna be and how we could respond after that meeting. But they shut off all communications, all debate, and moved everything forward. On February twenty-third, in front of the handful of people who were there. I asked Mr. Carrier point blank. I said, I've been living on this property for thirty years. Never have I had water in my basement. Never. I have water on the property, but never any water in the basement. You're making a pledge to everyone who buys a new home from you. That they will never have any water in their basement for five years. But you're gonna displace a lot of land and you're gonna displace a lot of dirt and a lot of soil and rocks. And you're gonna displace water. That water seeps out into the ground. And whether it goes on Maria Road or not, if it shows up in my basement, what are you doing for me? Nothing was his answer. Okay, nothing was his answer. I said, what happens if it shows up on Maria Road? The guy's house across the street who just bought the house and paid four hundred and eighty thousand for it. Nothing is what Carrier's gonna do for that person. So you got two homeowners right on Maria Road, right on the corner of Tall Timbers. And Carrier says, we do nothing for you if you have water in your basement, because we're building this development. Again, I'm just trying to say that the guy is not giving us. The homeowners who've been here any kind of satisfaction. The Wetland Commission completely shut us off, because they ran that that meeting. Straight through to eleven o'clock and just shut everything down. No chance to re, come back and ask questions, no chance to have any more public debate. Again, that was a Chris Hohead, the attorney. I make a motion that we close debate, close discussion, move this thing forward. And before you know it, we had no clue what was going on. So there's gonna be some lawsuits that are gonna be coming. And there'll be some lawyers that maybe will take this on, because they're gonna come from New Haven. Or they're gonna come from another, another state to do this. This is not proper. You're railroading this through and you're not giving the residents an opportunity to speak. And then when you do, you cherry pick who's gonna speak and who's gonna come to listen to John Carrier talk. John doesn't like what people are saying about him. In public debates on Facebook and social media and everything else. But John is creating this drama by not allowing us to speak. And having the Wetland Commission vote to have no more public discussion on that was a no-no. And they know it was a no-no, but they did it anyway. I'm done.
Thank you.
Hi. Jane Carlosi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Jane Carlosi. I live at Two Tall Timbers, also right across the street from the entrance and. I, I heard the traffic thing and. It really does not sound right to me that twenty-five houses. With presumably at least fifty cars realistically in Farmington. Because they all have two cars and a lot of them have a third car for a kid. Is really gonna create that few trips and I also note that. It's also gonna add a bunch of school bus stops, because I'm assuming. The school bus is gonna stop on Maria Road and not in the cul-de-sacs. The school bus does not go down Old Pond. It only goes down Tall Timbers. Because after thirty-something years of not going down Tall Timbers, one of the neighbors complained enough. That they got the bus to go down the street, but it's a much longer street. So I don't, I I kinda doubt that they've considered those extra school bus stops on Maria Road um. And the effect on traffic that that will have. I know when we moved in here. There were so many young kids. And the traffic on Maria Road was so bad. That they had to break up the elementary school bus stop into multiple buses. Just so that cars would not get aggravated and drive around the school buses. And then they also had to build a widening in the road for the school buses to pull over. Because they were afraid that somebody was gonna get impatient and rear-end the school bus. So I just have some concerns about the traffic and on the road. It does go very fast. I'm very surprised that there's only been one accident. Because we see a lot of them all the time and they may not have been reported, but people. It's a deceptive curve coming around from Bristol into where Tall Timbers is. And it is not unusual for people to slide off the road and hit the trees on either side of the street. Mostly in the middle of the night, not realizing that there's a curve there. Um. The only other thing I, I do. The housing, Tall Timbers may be a cluster development. Old Pond may be a cluster development. But to compare the two and say, oh, they're the same, not really. Our lots are all over an acre. Um even Coke Farms, the lots are significantly larger than the lots proposed for. This development. So I, I don't really see it as apples to apples, just because they're both. Cluster developments. Um and then I also share the concern about people using fertilizer and having it go into the wetlands. The zoning, um the Wetlands Commission. Went against their own guidelines to allow these houses to be much closer to the wetlands than would normally be. There's gonna be a lot of runoff of fertilizers, insecticides, pesticides, whatever. Um and I'm just concerned about the effect that that's gonna have. On the wetland and on the turtles, the frogs, everything else. Um. This is a very active wetland. There's a lot, lot of wildlife. Um I don't see how it's not gonna be impacted. I also see a lot more water there than would be. Uh indicated by the five-hundred-year flood plans. There's a lot of water on there sometimes and um. I. I know um. We have a lot of water in our yard, the way the yard is constructed, it doesn't go in the house. But there's a lot of water and I know other people on the street have had problems with a lot of water. Um. I'm really concerned that this is not being um considered seriously enough. So um that's all I have and thank you for serving the town so well.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Uh if anyone else has questions or comments, please raise your hands to be acknowledged by the uh. By the commission. Um Darth Vader, I noticed you've got your hand raised again. Do you have another comment or? You care what they think on time? No, okay. Uh Bruce. Bruce Chadwick, if you want to.
Hello?
Oh, Darth Vader, alright, whoever. Alright, Eric, you're gonna go again?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Um I had a question. I was hoping um. One of the other panel members um was still online um. To ask, how close is this said project to um?
The end of Plank Hill.
The end of Plank Hill Road.
We're at the end of it.
We're at the very end of the cul-de-sac and I know these maps are, they're rather small um to, to see.
So you're looking at Bristol? He said one.
He's where the extension is from Bristol Road.
Yes, yes, I'm probably one of the very last houses in Bristol on the Farmington line.
That's Stevens, right?
Good job.
Okay, is this, uh so I'm assuming you can see my screen. It has the aerial map up?
Yes, there's two cul-de-sacs there. I'm not exactly sure which one is ours.
I have no idea. I, there's, you're saying this is not, this is.
Is there, is there a way of obtaining a street name by clicking on it or no?
No, because that's in Bristol and I don't have access to the Bristol G I S at the moment, but my colleague has already looked.
Plank Hill is the northern one.
It's the north one, so this is.
That one, that's Plank Hill.
That's Plank Hill. And this entire parcel is uh part of the land that's being deeded to the open space, so here's. This is Tall Timbers down here, so the.
Uh open space or left wild?
It amounts to the same thing for the town of Farmington. They'll be not, they'll be not touched. They'll be, it's open space and they, it's gonna be deeded to the town as open space and the restrictions. Uh it's the most it would be used for is passive recreation. And if I recall correctly from the D E P letter on the N D D B. Uh review, they are suggesting limiting passive recreation because of. The turtles, et cetera, that are in the vicinity of this property. So open space is open space, as it looks today is how it will remain in perpetuity. Assuming it is deeded to the town, uh assuming this project moves ahead, so otherwise. Then it, that doesn't happen. Um. Uh the western development is located in this area opposite Tall Timbers. This is where the eighteen cluster unit is. And then uh the seven clusters are approximately five hundred feet. Just to the east, the driveway for them is approximately in this vicinity. Uh to the east of Coke Farms, and so there's seven units in this area.
Um how big is that open space that uh you previously had pointed at?
Forty-two?
This is approximately forty, uh our G I S is saying forty-two point eight acres.
Okay, has anybody ever done any kind of um surveillance as far as uh water on that forty-two acres?
Well, that's private property, sir, so I don't believe anyone has done surveillance there.
Okay, I thought that was also purchased by Carrier.
Nothing has been.
Well, nothing's been purchased at this time. There's a uh an agreement in place, but. Again, up until this has started, it's a, it's private property and nowhere's doing surveillance on the property.
Okay, cuz my concern was the floodwaters that um.
We got that data from FEMA, so federal emergency management uh provides us the FEMA information. And so that's the uh, that's what we use to understand the flood elevations and their, the elevation. And the footprint uh over which they cover.
I would just love to invite somebody to come take a look at our backwoods that um. Where all of that is, that that right now, there's about an inch of water standing in the um, in the woods. Um and uh. You know, uh the water is gonna be displaced and it has to go somewhere and I'm afraid that it's gonna push back down into our neighborhood.
Uh we can take a look at the topography, but I don't believe from a topography standpoint um that the water would. Uh be able, any of the work that's being done here would have a impact to. The upper reaches of this watershed. Again, we'd have to have the water flow uphill. Um there certainly are backwater and tailwater conditions. Um but the water isn't significant, there isn't a significant enough volume of water and the detention basins are in place. To offset that.
Yeah, yes, and I have a detention basin in. Yeah, yes, and I have a detention basin in my backyard as well. Um but we do have, it it doesn't show here in this um in this map. But from our detention basin, there is a stream that runs all the way through the woods to Maria Road. And then from Maria Road goes out into Scott Swamp.
I can put a call into um Bristol uh Planning Department and Bristol Engineering because there could be uh perhaps an issue with your detention basin and the functionality of the basin.
Yeah, we've had it looked at and it it's it's absolutely fine. Um it's just the fact that you cannot, you cannot, yeah, you cannot get rid of water, you only could displace it. And um it's just, I I I'm just afraid that it's going to go into that forty-seven, the forty-seven acres of woods that we have that is already flooded um in this backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Chadwick, we should be able to address the commission, please.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Bruce Chadwick from Nine Tall Timbers Drive and uh thank you for the for taking the public comment and listening to our neighbors. There are many of their concerns. Had a couple other questions and just some comments I'd like to add to the record and may have some more on the on the twenty-seventh, continuing the public hearing. Um I'm interested in the detention basin, this leads to a question as to what the homeowners association will be responsible for. I think I heard maybe Attorney Hoab mentioned that that will be uh part of their responsibility to maintain the retention basin. Um and um and also what other duties will the homeowners association have? Will they be responsible for obviously not um uh dealing with school bus issues, but um trash pickup, leaf pickup, snow plowing, street sweeping? It's if it's private roads, will those be provided services, uh service provided by the town? Or will those be provided by the homeowners association? So if someone could address that in the future, that would be great. Um getting back to the traffic, uh you heard a lot of comments on the number of cars and I agree those numbers are are not reflective of what we experience every day here. I've uh my wife and I have lived here since nineteen ninety-four. And um picking a one hour peak and non-peak hours, whatever, in the morning and the afternoon to try and isolate that really doesn't tell the whole story, especially now with um as one of the other commentators said, with everybody has two cars, we have constant delivery trucks being uh delivering stuff during COVID. Uh there's a lot of traffic on the road and so I think you really have to focus on uh on those issues. And as Commissioner Ryan has said about the, you know, during the prior public hearing and BB development, the gas station, our roads are not adequate to address existing traffic, so any additional development will impact that and that's gotta be considered. Um and in that respect, I'd like to um ask the commission and the developer to think again about any traffic calming techniques. Um I don't agree with speed bumps. Um Garden Street has been quite an adventure over the years as far as how that's worked out or not. Um or traffic signs or obviously stoplights, things like that, I think are out of the question, but some some sort of way to slow down the traffic, because if you look at the the speeds that are indicated in the traffic report, those are probably conservative as well. Um it's a thirty mile an hour speed limit on Maria Road. You can see the averages are between forty-six and fifty-two miles per hour. Rested eighty some eighty uh eighty-fifth percentile. Um it is a perfect ball, a perfect speedway, the way the road is constructed and now you come down a hill out of Bristol. It flattens down, you walk the hill toward um Plainville Avenue and um I've been out there sometimes and the cars are going by at sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. So we gotta think about that very carefully and traffic calming would be a uh a good thing to think about. And finally, um I wanna talk a little bit about uh something else that people haven't mentioned, but pedestrian access. Um and I brought this up at the um at the informal hearing in February that Mr. Carrier had. And um we all have sidewalks on our on our streets, uh although I I do believe Old Pond is not, but Cold Farm does and Tall Timbers does. We're people that walk between the streets and they walk on Maria Road and I fear for their lives with the traffic that's on Maria Road and how fast it goes. So I'd really like you to consider some sort of um sidewalks on the developer side of the property. I know it's gonna be a difficult task with the uh the culverts where Scott Swamp runs underneath, but anything can be done if we get creative. And in that way, that all the neighborhoods could be connected possibly by crosswalks and further um have people spend more time outside, get to know their neighbors and uh and being safe on the roads because they wouldn't be walking on the shoulder of a road where there's such enormous traffic at great speeds. So those are the ones I have for tonight. Thank you for taking my comments and um I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. There's a uh Rick and Lily Barufi.
Hi, hi, this is uh hi, this is Fred Barufi. It's actually Frederick. Um the I have a few concerns. I'm at thirty-two Coke Farms Road. And I have I have a concern over the the precedent that would be set by reducing the acreage from one acre in the zone to less than a quarter acre. I have a big concern about that because then what you're doing is you're setting a precedent for other builders coming into the town and Farmington has you know, we moved to Farmington twenty-seven years ago because it is a valley, it is a farming, as someone said, it's a farming town. We wanted to keep it rural. If you start doing that, you're gonna get over, you start reducing your zoning laws, you're gonna get an influx of builders in here to 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 do this and it's gonna affect our our ecosystems. I have also concern with the water, if I believe I heard it correctly, the water is gonna drain towards wetlands. Just think about that for a minute. That's a bad recipe for disaster right there. You got all pollutants, potential pollutants going towards wetlands. That I I I don't agree with that a- a- at all. And then someone also brought the traffic. I'd like someone to do a study on the cut-throughs through Coke Farms Road. People are going through there at forty, fifty miles an hour. I walk on the sidewalks.
Including the school buses.
Including the school buses. You're gonna have a kid get killed there and then it's gonna be on your hands. If someone's gonna get hurt there, I'm telling you right now, I walk every day and they come through there like a bat out of hell. So you've gotta consider that cuz that's that's the cut-through and everyone, it it's it's increasing every year. You start putting houses there, you're gonna even have more cut-throughs there and someone's gonna get hurt. It's gonna be on your your hands.
Wow, thank you. Thanks. I wonder if they called the uh police department for all the traffic issues that are being brought up.
Okay, um Dan, go ahead uh real quick cuz uh I've had somebody.
I know, we're we're hitting the end of the thing and I just wanted to make three quick points. Hopefully it's just three. One, um I just wanted to clarify that we don't, we're not against the houses that Carrier builds. Quite honestly, they look really nice. And you know, if you're gonna build houses, those are the kinds of houses you wanna build. Um but I think that the Wetlands Commission was very abrupt at authorizing a twenty-five foot buffer. That's just not appropriate. And as several people have said, and as I said before, the runoff from chemicals and everything else into the wetlands becomes a risk. Second thing is that um there's a, there was a comment from someone from Bristol about the a survey of that open space and and the comment you made was that, well, we can't do that, it's private property. Well, quite honestly, all of these areas are private property. The areas that are under consideration are private property. That hasn't been bought yet, that hasn't been opened up yet, and yet we've done surveys there. So I would question exactly what can we do surveys on and what can't we do surveys on? And just to the last comment, the the point that Bruce made about putting a sidewalk in there or something would be great because people do walk up and down Maria Road and the fact that you're gonna have all this development going on. If you can't find a way to put a sidewalk in, you're doing, you're not doing a full job. Um and the last comment that the uh the gentleman made about the racing of school buses, you're gonna have a bunch of school buses going through and they're already trying to meet schedules for the schools. And now you're adding twenty-five houses. Think about it. That's all. Thanks very much. I hope we come to a amicable solution on everything.
Thank you for your additional comments. Okay, I got um I'm seeing another hand raised. Uh Arlene Klein?
Hi, this is Arlene. Um I live at forty-three Coke Farms. I I was helping Ed do the traffic study and I just would like to make one comment based on what Rick and Lil just mentioned. I sat at the intersection of Coke Farms and Maria Road from seven o'clock in the morning until eight forty, eight forty-five. And um there were a total of, oh god, forty cars um that went through, but what's telling about that is between seven thirty and seven thirty-eight. Wait a second. There were twenty-four cars. In that fifteen minute period, there were twenty-four cars and they come in clusters because what happens is the cars are coming down Maria Road and they see that the light is backed up and they say, oh, I'm not gonna sit in that and it backs up almost to Coke Farms. Ed, I think, took a pretty good picture of it. I think he did send it to you. And they see that and they say, oh, I'm not gonna sit at that light and they start turning into Coke Farms. So yeah, the traffic here is bad in the morning between that happening and the school buses and people walking their dogs and somebody did mention the speed limit. We have a twenty-five mile speed limit here in Coke Farms. And it's not enforced by these people that are cutting through. They're cutting through in order to beat the light, so they're not cutting through to go twenty-five miles an hour and they're going much faster. I think one of the commissioners asked if we've ever had the police involved and we have over the years. They put out one of those um meter things, I don't know, they look like marquees and they count how many come through and what this, you know, you can see what the speed limit is as you're passing it. The problem is people know they can see the speed limit as they're passing it. And so when that happens, when they bring in that piece of equipment, people all of a sudden are kind of slowing down. My son, years ago, when he was standing out front waiting for the school bus, we're right at the curve where Coke Farms comes around, sort of a s- a curve. I used to say to him, do not stand right at the edge of the driveway. And there had, there was a couple of accidents in here where people are coming around the curve and they hit one of the parked cars on the right-hand side because they're not paying attention. It happened to my neighbor who lives at number forty-five Coke Farms that just a car coming around that corner, I don't know what the woman was doing, but she slammed into the back of his parked car. So it is a problem in here and that's why people are a little bit incensed about the traffic study and the fact that you mentioned that an alternative route was to come through here. Um and I do believe that the number of cars you're saying are going to be added to to this uh coming through because of this development is a little bit low. You're talking about putting eighteen cars in Tall Timbers and everybody in there will have probably at least two cars. So that's thirty-four cars. I'm not saying they're all gonna leave at the same time, but it sounds very low in terms of what you're saying that the the additional commuting traffic will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, we've approached, so we're after eleven o'clock. What we would like to do at this point um is pause public comment. There will be an opportunity for follow-up. Some of you have been very patient. I know there was others that wanted to um speak regarding this matter, so Madam Chair, I defer to you, but my my thought is perhaps uh use this opportunity to pause, but.
Yeah, I think this is um, yeah, great idea. It's been a long day for all of us. We're all volunteers. Everyone has been super patient, like you said, on the phone. Uh you know, they're definitely um you know, everyone has been grateful, um you know, to speak, which I appreciate. I think that uh there there are a lot of different things that uh the applicant can take away and uh get back to us on um the the whole Coke Farms cutting through, there's definitely an existing issue, which I understand people are feeling that it may be exasperated, but there's definitely um an opportunity to speak to the police department, in my opinion. Uh I definitely am looking forward to Attorney Hoab to give us more information on that uh February meeting. Just a disconnect somewhere, but um that's okay. We'll get to the bottom of every everything. Um Shannon, yes, I agree. Uh we should continue to March twenty-seventh. Do we need a motion for that?
So I I'm gonna make a suggestion on two things.
Yes.
To see if Attorney Hoab has anything to say before we close out for the evening.
That's fine, yeah.
And then a suggestion on, uh yes, we will need a motion and continuation.
Yep.
But a suggestion on expectations for the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
So maybe see if Attorney Hoab has anything and then we can talk about.
Yeah, perfect.
Uh the twenty-seventh, so.
Yes, let's do it. Thank you.
Attorney Hoab, do you have any, anything to close with uh this evening or um?
Uh other than to say, we've heard uh some of the neighbors' responses or concerns and we will uh do our best to address those questions at the next meeting. And uh thank you everyone for your patience and I look forward to seeing everyone in a couple of weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay, yeah. All right, let's talk, cuz we have a couple of things co- continuing anyway, right?
Uh we have.
Mr. Wilson.
Wilson's continue, so we can.
Yeah, go ahead.
With respect to this specifically, my thought is um so that everyone's expectations are the same. My my thought is to have the applicant again start on the twenty-seventh to provide any additional information.
Yep.
Clarifications, address any comments that they, whether it's outstanding staff comment or comments heard this evening to the extent practical.
Yep.
Um and and able to within understanding it's a two-week time turnaround time. And then uh allow, go back to commission.
Yep.
Questions.
Yep.
Cuz we've done an additional two weeks and perhaps additional information received. And then reopen public comment with the preference for everyone listening at the moment to any of those that did not have an opportunity to offer a public comment this evening would have preference on the twenty-seventh. And then anyone wanting to offer second comment or clarifications would then be entertained at the commission's discussion.
That works. Tell me about the timing, though. We start at six thirty, right?
Uh I may actually.
Move that.
Move that.
Okay.
Because I think we've got too much.
Yeah, okay, good.
So I I will talk to our Director of Community Services and I think we're unfortunately, I think we've got too much.
Okay.
We're gonna have to move that. So we're gonna leave the official meeting start time at seven o'clock and uh I'll have to talk to Nancy.
Okay, that works. Yeah, that that's, yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. Um, okay, so commissioners, we are in person on the twen- starting the twenty-seven. We will provide Zoom uh for folks uh that are calling in and cannot make it.
So. Jump right in, I apologize, but it is a hybrid meeting, so the commission will mostly be in uh here in person. And it is open to any applicant or any member of the public to attend in person as well. Zoom platforms will be provided for anyone uh that requests or needs it. It actually, the Zoom platform will be on the agenda and available to anyone that needs it.
And the information, the links, everything will stay online, right? For the documentation?
Correct. The documentation will say, as long as the hearing is open and it's an active conversation, the documentation remains online. Once the hearing is finished and voted on, then we make room for. Once the hearing is finished and voted on, then we make room for the current applications. It's not left there in perpetuity.
Sounds good. All right, so, uh.
Hey, Shannon, can I ask a quick question? Shannon, I'm sorry, I missed this. Does the applicant need to be, now that we're in hybrid? Is it encouraged or does the applicant need to be in person, or can the applicant still be on Zoom?
Yeah, it's at their discretion.
Okay.
Alright, so some of the smaller, like our sign applications at the start of the night, when they're on and off in five minutes, probably don't need to be here.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes that, no.
Right, so that's, you know, cuz these people sometimes are coming from far corners of the state or, you know, um, so no, they don't need to be here. Uh, but it's at their discretion. Some, uh, we get some attorneys or some engineers that are having to cover multiple meetings in an evening. And the Zoom platform allows them to do that. So. That's. They're encouraged, they're encouraged to be here in person, but it is not mandated.
No, no, it makes sense.
By state statute as well, so as far as. Yep.
And, and, uh, the, the, the technology is all set in the council chambers to, to pull it off.
Well, that's what we're working on, which is why we can't just do this with a flip of a switch, so.
Yeah, understood. Alright, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So un- unless, uh, commissioners, if you have any, uh, last burning questions, uh, we need a motion in a second to continue, please. All right, so motion in a second to continue.
Okay, this is Liz Sanford. Did someone have a question?
No, go ahead, Liz, let's go.
Okay, uh, Liz Sanford, um. Uh, I move that we continue the Carrier Group Inc.'s application for twenty-five lot cluster subdivision. On lots. Eight-five-one-seven and eight-five-one-eight Maria Road, and continue that until the March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Mike Walsh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, okay, we're good. All right, thank you, everyone, um, and we'll, I guess, continue.
Alright.
Um, Shannon, I, the one thing that's, because we were just talking about the web, I liked how. The link for documents is on the town website.
Okay.
It, I just think for transparency is good.
Well, they've been there. It's been there. I just, when I send it to you folks, I've used.
A different.
I've used a different length, so rather than having it in multiple, like, because this is so, there's so many documents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I, uh, I can't, there's, I can't get it in our, our cloud platform and here, so. It's all here, so it's the same.
That's funny.
It's the same, it's always been there, or always, while we've been on Zoom, it's had to be online, all the applications.
So key, I guess, keep it online. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you for keeping it straight.
Hmm.
Okay, it's okay. Go ahead, sorry.
Nope, that's it, and I don't have any other planners report item, uh, everyone, and. As far as, uh. Residential zoning review, I'm still working on questions that were. They're now three weeks old, um, uh, finalizing responses and get that updated, and we'll get the information regarding. Uh, some sample regulations on inclusionary zoning for Stanford and, uh. Darian, I was on a, um. Land use webinar on Saturday, uh, this Connecticut Bar Association had a land use webinar, and, uh. It was a fun way to spend a Saturday. And, uh. Was there to, uh, learn about a variety of case law items, and we. One of the items was, uh, affordable housing, and they mentioned Stanford and Darian specifically with their inclusionary zones. So we'll grab, I've, I've got Stanford, so we'll grab Darian. And get it up, uh, online for everyone to take a look at. Again, I know we've got a. Unfortunately, folks, a heavy workload probably for the next, uh, at least three meetings. This is gonna carry through till the end of April at this, uh. At this pace, uh, unfortunately, so. Um. Bear with us. We're gonna try and, you know, get to the information the best we can, but, uh, I think.
But we'll do it together, in person.
We'll do it together in person, so, uh, but I will get some updated info for you, um. From a, a residential zoning review. In our work session, um, but I do not have something for this evening.
That, that's okay. I wanted, um, did you see, I don't know if you saw, had a chance, but the Yukon trainings. Um, that we had a chance to participate in, the links finally came out.
The links came out, okay, so I can get those emails to everybody.
Yeah, or put it on the share pointer, wherever you're putting information on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Um, I do not have anything burning. Um, so we just need yet to, uh, commissioners, unless you have questions for Shannon. Uh, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February twenty-seventh.
Okay, Liz Sanford, uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Mike Walsh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, alright, we're good. Alright, so eleven sixteen, we are adjourned.